Good evening, Mr. and Mrs. America and all the ships at sea, or whatever Walter Winchell used to say. Welcome to the Ohi City Council meeting. We are now in order and the local clerk please call the rule.
Mayor Johnson.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Blas. Councilmember Francina.
Here.
Councilmember Haney.
Here.
Councilmember Wyrick.
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum. James, would you do the honors of leading us in a fledge?
Yes. Okay, I have the flag here. Right hand over your heart, ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, visible, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, thank you, James. Presentations, James, do you have any presentations? Says none.
No, not today.
Okay, moving right along to the consent calendar.
Mayor Johnson, I'll be pulling item F for a clarification.
Okay, item F, are there any other items from the consent agenda that anyone would like polled? If not, okay, do you have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay.
Sorry, Susan.
Okay.
Moved and seconded, is there any objection to the motion? Aria none, the consent calendar is approved with the exception of item F. Bill, you want to ask?
My only clarification of item F is I want to make sure it's clear for the record that the scope of the MOU that we're delegating to the city manager to develop, our staff, would include a location evaluation and possible alternative sites. And with that, I'm okay, as long as that's clear. We're moved to approve with that stipulation.
You're what, keeping the option open, what, to move the compo- what exactly are you?
Well, I want to have the MOU include the scope for staff to evaluate the proper location, whether or not that's the best location for it. I mean, that would still, other locations either slightly different or maybe more substantial. The point is to allow staff to evaluate the location within the scope of the MOU.
Well, and the other part of that, Mayor, is also that it, that the MOU can come to the garden committee for us to look at and digest and talk it through. Right now, he submitted a thousand-square-foot plot of land somewhere on the property. And I'm in complete agreement with Bill, still needs to come to the committee, and we still need to have a discussion as to the best location for it.
Okay.
Well, will you be including Bill White when you meet to discuss, Dave White, sorry, David White, when you meet to discuss it?
Yeah, he's on the committee.
David White is on the committee?
Yeah, yeah, he'd be a part of it, yeah.
So the committee is you and Bill and David White?
Ryan. No, not Bill, Ryan.
Ryan, Randy, David White.
Yeah, all, any, any, right now, any person that has a MOU to use the facility with the city, and we're approving that tonight with David White, so he'll be a full-time member, and he'll be part of anything that goes on there, being just having a voice and a sound to reason. I think that's what Ryan and I had looked at initially, and James.
Excellent.
Is there any formality to this campus or garden committee that we're referring to? I don't recall seeing.
It's an ad hoc council committee that we appointed.
Okay, but seems a bit chaotic, but I guess you guys will sort it out. Okay, James, you understand what the suggestion is? Does that just create more flexibility in the process, or do you see any issues?
No, that'll work, and we'll come back to the council with the full MOU when that's ready to.
Okay.
Again, my motion to approve with that.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded, Susan?
James, do you need anything else from us to have the Ohi Garden Club meet, and any of that?
Oh, no, no, just as long as, we just wanted to make sure that we have the approval to start that program, and then we can coordinate with David White.
All right, good.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded to amend the instructions, I guess, to the MOU. Is that what it is, Bill?
Yes.
Okay, and James has the detail of that. Is there any objection to going forward with this item? Or do I, I have a motion to, what we do, we have a motion to amend it. I guess we can consider that to be a substitute motion for, to approve number, or item F, okay? Any objection to that? Aria none, it's approved, okay?
Thank you for clarifying that, Mayor.
Yep. Okey-dokey, we are, let's see what time is at 22:00. We are now on discussion item, now the planning commission is, this appeals. Do we have any comment cards from the public?
Yes, so we had a, we had some general comments.
Okay, just a second, let me clarify my question. Do you have any for public comment? It comes up at 7:30, because I didn't want to get into a lengthy item and make whoever's waiting on the public comment, I did that before, because I.
Yeah, we received some written comments that were distributed to council. Let me see if, are there any, is there anybody waiting to speak in the lobby? There's nobody waiting to speak, so we have the written comments, which were distributed, and we could, you know, all of the general public comments today were about football, so.
Great.
Okay, but the, so we don't have any under the public communication, items not on the agenda, right?
No.
Okay, let's proceed now then to the, what is it? Discussion on number two? Okay, James?
Yeah, and I guess, you know, I, let me ask the city attorney real quick if the, if we should, if the project applicant should start off, or how we would, is there a requirement to have?
I would recommend that we start with the staff presentation and summarizing the planning commission's action, then the appellant can speak, and then anyone else who may wish to speak.
Okay.
The latter two in the public hearing.
Okay, so we'll start with the presentation from staff. The community development manager, Lucas Seibert, just joined the meeting, and he will be giving the staff presentation. He gave the presentation at the planning commission, when the planning commission rendered its decision, and that decision now is appealed to the city council by the project applicant. So I'll let Mr. Seibert go through that presentation.
Thank you, City Manager James Zega. My name is Lucas Seibert, Community Development Manager for the city of Ohi here. And what I'm going to do is I'm going to share my screen here, and I have a quick PowerPoint presentation I'd like to run through, and hopefully it ends up being some discussion pieces that we can draw from here as well. So hold on one moment here. All right.
A young man's game.
All right, so tonight, we have an appeal of the planning commission's decision to city council. This item went before planning commission on August 5th, and the appeal was filed in August, it was actually August 19th. What I'd like to do is to go through a little bit of background regarding this item, to give some context to the council and to the community in general watching from home. In March of this year, our associate planner issued a zoning clearance, and that zoning clearance, at that time, was issued in error. That error was identified with visibility concern that was identified by our code enforcement officer. They brought that to my attention, which then caused me to do a quick search and review of the code, and then that same day issued a stop-work order. That stop-work order had that fence that was proposed, as it is a fence that we're talking about tonight, fence that was six feet in height, to be stopped in terms of its construction. At that point, staff then scheduled a site visit with the property owners to talk through the stop-work order options moving forward. And then during that site visit with the property owners, identified a formal letter would be provided to, and mailed to the property owners identifying their options. They included things such as a variance regarding the proceedings, reduction in height of that fence, and then obviously the one that they opted for was the appeal of the community development manager's decision. That appeal came forward on July 9th. They appealed my decision to revoke the zoning clearance. And I should preface it again in identifying this zoning clearance was issued in error. It was a, it was an error on staff's judgment, and that appeal was a part of that error and regarding this fence moving forward. That appeal sent the item to planning commission, that decision was heard on August 5th. They heard the item, upheld the appeal that was provided by the property owners with modifications to address safety, and it's the safety concern that I'll be showing here in slides to come. With that, so the decision was rendered on the 5th, and the owner instead continued to do work on the fence, and that started again on August 10th, even though there was still a stop-work order that was still in place, as well as the August 5th planning commission decision that had been rendered. I then went out and met with the property owner that same day, that same evening, identified that the stop-work order was still in effect, that their, that the decision by the planning commission had not solidified, meaning that there was still an appeal period that was identified. And, but they continued to do work and finish the fence. And by doing that, I made them aware that the citation could be issued in violation of that. The, and I gave them really until, through a written letter that was sent on August 12th. I gave them until the 24th to peel, either peel back the fence or remove the fence to where it was at when the stop-work order was issued. They instead opted to maintain that fence at its current location, and in doing so, they appealed the August 5th planning commission decision. Staff went out and did a visual window survey of the site on the 24th, identified that there was still a safety concern, and it hadn't been addressed at that point, and issued a citation and threw the $200. The, and then there was a second window survey that was done recently on, at the end of, end of the day on Friday. Gave the full three-day weekend for the appellant, the property owner, to satisfy that safety concern, a second citation was issued this morning. And then obviously, September is obviously, obviously today is the appeal for the city council. So with that, fences just in general, there are, you know, there are many legal non-conforming fences in Ohi, and they are replaced and required to be brought into compliance with the current Ohi Municipal Code. Many residents, just overall, have installed fences based on other non-conforming fences in their neighborhoods. I know in the short time I've been here, I've certainly had several conversations with residents that have identified their neighbors as having non-conforming fences and saying, why can't they have that? Well, those are considered non-conforming, and we're looking for compliance to the current standards of the code. And then they're just not realizing that the new fences aren't meeting the current standards of the code. There's really four different types of fences or parameters that we're looking at here. You're looking at new fences, those require to meet, they're required to meet the current standards. You have legal non-conforming fences, those were legally established at the time of the installation, whether that be 10, 20 years, or even longer than that. But then don't conform to those current standards, and what we're looking for is compliance. So those legal non-conforming fences, when brought to our attention, and when a proposal was brought forward, we're looking for those fences to be brought into current compliance. And then you have existing conforming, those have been established to the standards at the time and remain conforming to current standards. And then obviously, they're legal fences that we, that we usually catch either mid-construction or, well, during mid-construction typically at the stop-work order.
Question?
With that, I also wanted to.
Just a minute, please, let the staff finish. Are you, you finished, Luke?
No, just about, I've got a couple more slides here, and then certainly the Q and A can start. I want to also talk about the intersection visibility triangle. And here, we've got a visual of what this, how this exists in the code today. And really, the purpose of the intersection visibility triangle is to provide safe visual clearance of vehicles, bicycles, and pedestrians turning at intersections. The intersection visibility triangle ensures northbound vehicles on Lyon Street entering Grand Avenue in the case of what we're talking about tonight, or eastbound vehicles on Grand Avenue turning onto Lyon Street. And I'll have an aerial showing these streets in this intersection we're talking about, making sure that they have clear line of sight, vehicle, pedestrian, and bicycle components. Particular importance is on Grand Avenue because of the importance of the Class 3 bike route, which is identified by the Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan. Now, as I mentioned, in March, an erroneous zone clearance had been issued. With that erroneous zone clearance, you can see a six-foot-tall fence, which was what was existing, was to be maintained and then rebuilt along this dashed black and white line that you see here. The visibility triangle was also identified on this corner piece, the northeast corner of the property along Grand and Lyon Street. The August 5th PC or Planning Commission decision included a six-foot-tall fence, you see in this dash line here. But then that, that dash line carries, which is the six-foot-tall fence, carries along this edge of the visibility triangle area. Now again, within this visibility triangle area, we're still looking at a three-foot height limitation. Planning commission's determination identified 12 feet along the northeast corner of the property to be carried down and south, and then 20 feet to be carried along the Grand Avenue or the northerly property line for the subject site. Now, you may be asking yourself, why is it 12 and not 25? Well, the distance and per code, in terms of this visibility triangle area, allows for it to be either within the private property or within the public right-of-way. And here, there's a 13-foot right-of-way that we're looking at here, taken from face of curb back, and that's where the 13 feet stops, and there 12 feet begins that we're seeing here along this easterly edge. The 20 feet, which was a determination made by Planning Commission on August 5th, while the code identifies 25, the 20 feet was taken from the edge of the public right-of-way to the west to get to that 20 feet. So once again, we're applying 25 feet along this side and still 25 feet along this side. I have a couple of visuals here, pictures if you will. This is a picture taken traveling along Grand Avenue eastward. You can see the fence to your right or to the south is the original fence, which is in disrepair and certainly in dire need of repair and reconstruction potentially. So the, the second photo that I wanted to show you is the new fence, the fence that was completed even with the stop-work order and the planning commission's determination that was provided. You're seeing this fence in its completed stage. Still, this is a visual taken east on Grand Avenue at the intersection of Lyon and Grand.
Why you, can I ask a question while you have that slide up?
Yes, go ahead, Susan.
Can you go back to the previous slide? So Lucas, is parking allowed right in front of that tree?
Yes. Yeah, east and west of Lyon, there is parking allowed.
Okay, so I attended, you know, the planning commission hearing was two or three hours long. I walked the, I looked at the area, I read the neighbors' letters, you know, the neighbors' challenge that there's a problem with, you know, visibility when you're in, if you park your car, I mean, if you're in a car, if, what I'm trying to say is that parked cars, especially SUVs, your trucks, are much more of a visibility, of a hazard as far as seeing, you know, anybody coming down the street. So why would you not have no parking there if that was, if visibility was the concern?
Senator Francina, I'll respond to that question in lieu of Mr. Seibert. The question of whether or not to sign any portion of the street, no parking or parking, is a question reserved to the judgment of the Public Works Director and should be considered independent of the questions regarding the height of the fence as required by the code, as interpreted by the planning commission. It's a worthy point to consider, but my recommendation would be that we put that on the list for the Public Works Director to evaluate separately from this appeal as to this fence standard.
Okay, and then my other question was, if they had left that old fence up, we wouldn't be going through this, correct?
If the old fence remained, then yeah, we wouldn't be going through this process.
They would be allowed to keep that old six-foot fence?
It would be considered non-conforming by the current standards of the code, as I mentioned in the, I want to say the third slide regarding fences.
I just want to be clear on that.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right, so continuing, this is a photo taken, taken looking to the west, and this is along Lyon Street. As you can see, off to the left or the south side is the existing fence that we're seeing there. And what's important about this shot, and I'll show you also the visual of the new fence as it exists, is visibility along this area, it's imperative that we maintain this, this safety visibility triangle, this 25-foot by 25-foot triangle, whether that's taken from the public right-of-way, which is what we're looking at here, which is from face of curb back 25 feet. That's showing that there is this 13-foot right-of-way, which is where your trees and your sidewalks and landscaping tends to exist. And that's fine, and what we're looking for here is full compliance with that safety visibility triangle area. Here's another shot taken a little bit further back, not necessarily all the way up to the wheelstop or that white line that you can see off to your, to your right or just to the north. You can see with this fence, there is, that fence certainly provides some concern, certainly some concern regarding the visibility for those motorists, pedestrians, or bicyclists that are either trying to get onto Lyon Street or onto Grand from Lyon Street, either going west or eastbound. Now, this is a, this is a slide I put together. I wanted to show kind of the peeling back of what this fence would potentially look like. And it's showing the northerly portion along Grand and that area being peeled back in terms of reduction in height or even reduced as to allow for a six-foot fence with, outside of that triangle visibility area. The same thing is true with this 12-foot that's being taken along, or identified along Lyon Street. So what we're seeing here is it's a three-foot-high fence if you're wanting that fence all the way up to the, to the edge here. Or it's a six-foot fence with these areas carved out, constituting that triangle or that visibility triangle area that we're discussing tonight. So with that, I would also provide city staff's recommendation that the city council adopt a resolution upholding the planning commission's decision to uphold and impart the appeal regarding the relocation of a zoning clearance for the relocation and reconstruction of a non-conforming six-foot-tall fence located within the front yard area along the north and east side of the property located at 603 Lyon Street. That's a part, that's a part of the attachments within the agenda report for tonight. Additionally, there's a second piece of this, and that is to determine whether to reimburse the appellant for the modification to the fence pursuant to the planning commission's determination. So with that, that ends my presentation for tonight, if you have any questions.
I have a question.
For Lucas?
Yeah, either Lucas or James.
Yeah, I was going to go back to James. Why don't I go to James first, and then you're next to ask the question? James, do you have anything else to add to the staff report?
I think the only thing I'll add is one point that Lucas made that is a challenge for us, which is that Ohi does not have a lot of development, and so that, he made this point upfront. To correct these, these fence issues that have existed for decades, if not longer, it really is almost a, you know, a case by case, as they come in, we have, we try to grab them and correct them when we can, and so it is a challenge. We had a fence this week, actually, this on Monday, that we gave a stop-work order to, and their response was, well, there's a lot of people on my street that have a similar fence, which is, you know, it is a challenge that we have because there's so many existing non-conforming fences. But the one point that I want to make is just that the, you know, the direction the staff at this point has been, you know, follow the code and enforce the visibility as the code has defined it, because that is our direction from council at this point. And so, you know, obviously, these situations are not situations that, you know, we enjoy or that are fun for anybody, but it's just, we, you know, we get a chance on occasion to try to correct, you know, a fence that had been there for 40 years or 50 years, and that's what we are trying to start doing little by little, which is frustrating for, I'm sure, for the people that are replacing those fence.
Okay, Susan, you have a question?
Yeah, well, we're in a dilemma, because as soon as I left looking, as soon as I was finished looking at that fence, I began to see all the other non-compliant fences, you know, the, and this is the sort of situation that definitely creates a bad feeling between the public and, you know, the officials and the staff at city halls, a difficult situation. It's made more difficult because it took two months for staff to realize a mistake had been made, so the fence was partly constructed. I mean, I understand that we have to, that we're, you know, there's obligation to follow the letter of the law, but I also can see the, I think we can all see the situation from the homeowner's perspective. And oh, my other question was, if we decide to reimburse the appellant, what kind of cost are we talking about?
And I believe the appellant, they have a presentation that has their invoice, and I'm sure they will give their presentation. I think the invoice I saw was about $2,700.
$2,700, okay, I'm done for now, yeah, thank you.
Okay, is there any other questions?
Mayor, I had, Mayor, I had two questions, if I may.
Yeah, go ahead.
I wanted to clarify that the address is 603 Lyon, so there, so it's not, their address is not face Grand, it is facing Lyon.
It faces Grand, Lyon, and Summer.
I'm talking to Lucas.
Staff.
Staff, okay, I want to be clear on that, and then I wanted to, I didn't see that you, that, I didn't see anywhere in our information packet about, didn't we just have a discussion about fencing and setbacks and alignments with houses? Remember the pool over on, you'll help me with this. Yeah, and then we had a clarification of where a fence and what it's setback would be.
Maybe that was Ventura, I'm sorry.
It is Ventura.
Yeah.
And I didn't see that sighted anywhere in here. So I see the triangle, which I agree with, but I'm not sure about, we're still allowing a. um, we're still allowing a six-foot fence unless, Lucas, I'm wrong in your interpretation, but we're still allowing a six-foot fence to come from the corner of the house towards Lyons, make a right turn towards Grand, reach 12 feet or 25 feet from the curb from Grand, and making a diagonal cut to Grand and then heading west to the other end of the property line. And you are allowing a six-foot fence in that entire area?
That was the, yeah, so that was the determination made by city cap, or by Planning Commission on Au- August, um, 5th.
And did we, did we bring, um, that modified, uh, code that we had just gone through two months ago to their attention that, um, what the, what the setback should be, and that's the corner of the house?
Absolutely.
We shouldn't even be allowing a six-foot fence to come towards Lyon from the corner of the house, much less down Lyons towards Grand. That should all be 36 inches. Am I correct?
Yeah, so if you're looking at the parameters of the code in terms of how it reads, this site functions in two ways. It functions as a through lot. So as a through lot, um, it, it has frontages or front yard areas on Grand and Summer. Okay? Because it's the narrowest portions. As a lot that also has access along Lyon Street, it also has a front yard area. So like, uh, Council, Councilwoman Francina had just mentioned a, a few moments ago, this lot has front yard areas along Grand, along Lyon, and along, um, Summer. That's pretty clear in the code. Uh, however, when, when this item was heard before the planning commission, that was the opportunity for them to, to evaluate the, the existing conditions as it, as, as the matter, um, was presented to them and make a determination. That determination was, was not in, in line with what planning, or with, with what I had identified in a letter that I sent back in June, which identified frontages along Grand, Lyon, and, and Summer. But that was their determination that they made on August 5th.
Just a quick clarification before we hear from the appellant, Mayor?
Yeah, Bill.
Question? Very quick. I, I think we need to listen to the appellant. Uh, so Lucas, my understanding, watching some of the planning commission meeting, was that they, they basically accommodated, um, on the frontage issue considerably from what's written in the code and then accommodated as much as they could on the, on the visibility triangle to the, with the use of the rightaways on Lyon and Grand. Is that an accurate statement?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions of staff before we, uh, bring the appellant up?
Mayor, I just can't, can we have someone look up that code that I'm talking about?
Well, I'm happy to.
While we're deliberating, James or Matt have that?
Matt.
No, we, we have it up. The code you're thinking of, that the council had recommended to be brought forward as an ordinance, would have required or will require when adopted, uh, no more than, uh, four feet in the, between the front of the house and the street, and three feet in height for a certain distance in, and then four feet in height from that distance in. I, well, off the top of my head, that's the required front setback distance, I think of 20 feet, and then from there back to the house, four feet in height. And this would, this proposed fence as approved by the planning commission would not be in conformance with that revised code. The reason that the planning commission, uh, did so was because that, that new code is not yet in effect. The council has given direction for that to be brought back to council. Uh, it has not yet come back to council. And, uh, at such time as it does and is adopted, then it would be enforced. But pending that, the planning commission made the recommendation to, uh, achieve a compromise with the current code, uh, focusing on this traffic safety corner.
It is the current code 36.
It's time that we, you know, I think let's hear from the appellant, and then we can continue the questions and the discussion. I think they've waited. Uh, James, is the appellant, uh, available?
Yes. She is present here.
Can you all hear me?
Yes. We hear you. Hi.
Thank you all for taking the time tonight. I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen. All right. So I've been working with city staff for a year now in a good faith effort to rebuild an existing non-compliant fence, as you've heard, on my property and make it legal. What you see here is a calendar representation of that.
It's not up on our screen.
You don't see this?
No.
It says sharing is paused. Bring your shared window to the front. Thank you for telling me. Hang on.
There you go.
Maybe I just can't make it fullscreen, but all right, we'll go with that. This is a calendar representation of this process. You can see that I've worked with staff for six months to permit the fence that is now built. After I received my stamped zoning clearance, I invested over $20,000 in the fence described by that permit and began construction. About 90% into the build. On the next to last day of construction, a stop work notice was served and the permit was revoked. I appealed this revocation to the planning commission, and last month the appeal was upheld with a minor modification calling for a reduced visibility triangle at the northeast corner. The planning commission stated that the city, rather than the homeowner, should be financially responsible for this additional work since it wasn't described by the original permit under which the fence was built. I committed to complying with this decision in its entirety, including continuing to invest time and money to secure financial commitment for this additional work as the commission recommended, which is of course what brings me here tonight. In parallel, though, I made a judgment call. Significant warping had occurred during the months of delay caused by the revocation and appeals process. And that last 10% of assembly was necessary in order to provide rigidity and prevent further damage. The investment my family had made in the fence was deteriorating by the day through no fault of our own, and I felt significant responsibility to protect what was left of it. I chose to finish installation in order to preserve the remaining value of the fence while I pursued the financial commitment for the additional work as quickly as I could. And I communicated this to both the members of the commission and to Community Development Manager Seibert. Seibert, my apologies. To that end, my fence builder has provided me with an estimate of just over $2,700 for the modified corner visibility work, which includes demolition of 32 linear feet of existing fence and construction of 23 new linear feet, all six feet in height outside the visibility triangle. I'm here tonight, of course, following through on the planning commission's decision that the city bear financial responsibility for this work. Alternately, you could determine that the fence as built does not represent a visibility hazard. And I want to say unequivocally that I'm okay with either of those outcomes. But I do think it's worth giving you the background to make that determination. During the original permitting process, the city took the issue of corner visibility very seriously, as it should. It was given a lot of weight and consideration during those six months. And it was ultimately determined that there is no visibility hazard posed by the fence because of the 13-foot and unimproved setback that you've heard runs along Grand Ave, shown here as a yellow band. That's because when you pull up at the stop bar on Lyon Street, you're already about nine feet out in front of the fence. So you can easily see past it, whether it has a corner cut out of it or not. So it was decided at the time that the standard visibility triangle was irrelevant in this particular case. These photos, which are very similar to the ones you saw from Mr. Seibert, show that visibility condition. On the left, from the vantage point of traffic coming down Grand toward the stop sign on Lyon, where you can see a car stopped, and you can see that that vehicle is fully visible from Grand when it stops there. And on the right, from the point of view of that car, when it stopped at Lyon, looking west along Grand. And you can see that that driver has a clear line of sight up Grand. I wish that I had taken new photos with a new fence because the ones you saw from Community Director Seibert were outstandingly misleading. The new fence is in the exact same location along its northern edge as the previous non-conforming fence. So there's no difference in visibility there. So the photo that you saw, which posed the visibility concern, was taken from much, much further back. Here you can see documentation from staff that the Community Development Manager and Public Works Director concluded after a site visit in January of this year that the 13-foot unimproved right-of-way provided adequate visibility. And again, during the Planning Commission Appeal Hearing on August 5th, Public Works Director Greg Grant stated that he agreed with the statement made by Chair Quilisi that the fence as currently proposed does not impede the view of eastbound traffic on Grand. So again, I'm here tonight following the planning commission's recommendation that the city bear financial responsibility for the newly proposed visibility triangle modification. Or you could find that as originally permitted, and as the Director of Public Works states, the fence does not propose a visibility hazard as built. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. What, uh, we have more questions? Any questions of the appellant or of the staff before we start deliberating?
I have a, a quick question, Mayor.
Okay, Bill.
On the, uh, Liz, you mind if I call you by your first name?
Of course.
Okay, um, the, the, uh, cost estimate for the modification, is that the cost estimate, um, uh, for the, uh, I know at the time of the planning commission hearing, you had just the posts and rails. You didn't have the slats up. I, I, I saw, I saw that personally. So is, is the modification cost from your, your fence builder, is that for modifying it from its current condition or modifying it, the post and rails before the slats were on?
No, from its current condition. It doesn't include any of that work. No.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions of the applicant or the appellant and, or staff?
Mr. Mayor.
If not, uh,
Oh, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, fine, okay. Ryan.
I, I just want to disclose that I did have some email communication with Liz, uh, before this was all went down with the planning commission. I was readily familiar with the situation, and I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that. That's all.
You mean in your capacity as a councilperson or as a lawyer?
No, just as a councilperson.
Okay, well, then that's a good service. You know, we should talk to everybody.
I, I saw that Matthew had his hand up, Mayor.
Yes, Matthew.
Yes, thank you. I was gonna say, before the council deliberates, this would be the appropriate opportunity to take any other public comment. I understand we have at least a little bit of other people wishing to comment on this matter.
Oh, okay, you're right. Let's see, at least as far as procedure, you're definitely right. Do we have, uh, I don't, I see anybody from, uh, do we, James, do we have any comments from the public?
So no one is, is called, has called into the meeting to comment, but there were the two public comments from Mark Goulet, um, that we forwarded over to the city council saying that, you know, I think they, they, they drove down the street and, um, said that they didn't feel it was a, a visibility issue.
Yeah. It's a code issue, though. Okay, uh, shall we now, uh, Matt?
Yeah, that deliberation would be in order.
Okay. Well, it seems like what we're dealing with is a question of how important is the, uh, issue of site distance in this town? Uh, it's been an issue for, forever. In fact, when I came to town, is it Heidi? Is that the applicant, the appellant? Anyway, when I came to town, my wife, uh, at one of these intersections, uh, had a, a car accident when another car ran into her and the other car was being driven by the planning director. But there was a hedge and nobody could see anything, and there were no stop signs. Today, there are stop signs in a lot of those places, so we have choices. Where you, this seems to me that it's, it's really about a safety issue rather than a, uh, personal, uh, taste, uh, whether or not hedges are good or bad, or, you know. I think the planning commission discussed this in great detail over the last two years and came back with a report saying that the council should be addressing the safety issue of side distance, particularly coming onto thoroughfares from, you know, cornered properties. Uh, so if that's the case, uh, and the, uh, appellant, uh, is, says that they're willing to go along with it, then I think it's our judgment. Is, is this important? And if it is, is it $2,700 worth of important? Uh, I would say yes. Other thoughts? Bill?
Yeah, I, I would, I would tend to agree. I'm thinking in that direction because the, the staff did make an error. On the other hand, uh, the appellant, uh, did blow through a couple's stop work orders. Uh, I think that, uh, the planning commission did a really good job of accommodating as much as they could without basically ignoring the code. In other words, the code is still respected. Uh, and I think that's important to, to have, to do what you can with the code, um, and be flexible as, as much as you can. Uh, but I think it's, it's a problem if you just decide to pick and choose when you're gonna, you know, respect the code. The other issue that I want to point out is that, um, there are those that, um, including myself, that have thought about using that right-of-way, that extraordinarily and a real resource, we have a real resource there in terms of that wide, old bridle trail on the, uh, south side of Grand. And if we ever do, uh, decide to, um, make that a, a bike trail as well, then the stop line will be, uh, at the right-of-way. Right now, the stop line for Lyon is, uh, not at the beginning of the right-of-way, it's at the, uh, curb line. And, uh, in other words, if that is a bicycle lane in the future, then the, the cars will be stopping further from Grand in order to not be parking, not be stopping in the bike lane. So that is part of our possibility in the future. So I, I agree with the mayor's approach on this. Maybe we put the triangle in there and, uh, and, and doing compensation.
Susan?
What Bill pointed out is, uh, I think, critical. If there weren't future plans to use that, that area as a bike lane or, uh, you know, horse, for horses or whatever, I, in my opinion, there are so many intersections in Ojai that are far more dangerous than this. The sight line would not be a problem. It's not a, to me, it's not a problem as it stands now because of where the cars are stopped. But based on future plans, I think we're better off, um, having the appellant make the modifications and then, but definitely compensate them financially because we made an, an error and it took two months to correct it. And, and, and also she pointed out that she wasn't just rebelling against the planning commission's recommendations. She was, you state, Liz stated that she was trying to keep the fence from deteriorating, and that was something I was not aware of before. I think she's made a good faith effort to comply, and I think that we need to compromise and work, work with her.
Yeah. My, my concern also goes, Bill, uh, I think we've talked about this before, that if this isn't important to start with, all of the calls that the city manager and the planning director get from everybody else is saying, well, okay, you waived, but not only do every, do people in my neighborhood have these things that are legally non-conforming, but you'd also conceded the point, so then you don't have any rule at all. So we might as well face up to it. If the rule is important for safety, maybe not as, as critical in this situation, but in the future it would be, and in other places it definitely is. Uh, so, uh, I guess.
Mayor, uh, Mayor Ryan and I haven't spoken.
Well, okay. Would you like to speak, Randy?
I'd, I'll defer to Ryan to speak after him.
Randy, I'll chair it. You, you'd like to speak, okay.
I'm not sure if you can see my hand.
Yeah, okay. I didn't see your hand. Okay. Uh, Ryan, did you have something you wanted to add?
Okay, I guess.
Randy said he wanted to have Ryan say something, I thought.
I, I don't really, I didn't know we got to call each other out in the order we wanted. That's a new thing.
We did, but he, yeah.
Well, thank you.
Because I didn't see your hand.
Well, I, I, I will say this. I, I think, uh, I think the points were well taken. I think, um, this is a, I think an acceptable compromise. As we did, the city made a mistake, and that's clear, and I am aware of that. And that, that we have to be responsible for. And Liz has done, I think it was a impeccable presentation. It was very clear and well-stated. And I think that, uh, for the amount of, of cost for, um, you know, what the applicant's asking for is a reasonable amount of cost for us to uh, ultimately do what we want to, to unfortunately have to eat a little bit of money because there was a mistake made. What I also think, now I know we're talking about the visibility triangle, but, and, and that is what's at issue here, and I don't want to overburden us with something extra, but I do want to make the point that this portion of the code where it deals with through lots and corner lots and creates three frontages is probably not the way the code was intended to be read. It takes very piecemeal different parts of the code to come up with this. And I just want to add that I think it's something we should add to the list of things to review later on. I think it could be cleaned up so that this situation doesn't happen again.
Okay, uh, Randy?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. So I agree with Ryan on that 100%.
So I agree with Ryan on that 100%. The fact that, again, we asked Planning to review Title 10, this might have been one of those little things that didn't, you know, come up on the radar. So that's one thing. I guess my concern is this, that there was a ruling made in Planning, there was an agreement made, and instead of living up to the agreement, Liz decided that she was going to do it her way. So I'm concerned with the complete disregard that she had for the time that we took as planners and the time that the city has taken to work with her. Contrary to the mistake that we made, I get that. So I want to clarify what we're doing here. First of all, she has been, she's worked through two, she's worked through one stop work order, she has been fined $500, am I correct, Liz?
She's been fined, yeah, I don't know that she's been fined yet.
And she was just fined again today, am I correct? So my take on this is I'd be willing to forgive the fines, but I would not be willing to give $2,700. I could see splitting the cost of this fence and the reason that I am for that is the fence posts were up and were easily able to modify at that point with the fence and railing. I know that because I do it for a living. That would have been the time to ease, to easily do what Planning and what you had agreed to originally, you could have done it at that time and it wouldn't have cost this additional amount of money. So I'd be willing to waive the fines, although I'm swallowing, taking a big gulp on that. But I'm not willing to concede $2,700. I would split the $2,700 and give her $1,350 and waive the fines. That's where I'm at on this.
Okay, is that a motion?
That would be my motion.
Just a minute, Randy still has the floor.
And that would be my motion.
Is there a second to that?
I'll second that.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to hear from the applicant in response to that.
Well, let's first have a discussion amongst ourselves. We're deliberating, then if we need to get more information. Susan, do you have a?
The Planning Commission very clearly recommended that the appellant be reimbursed. At that point, she had not completed the fence. They recommended reimbursement based on the mistake that the city made. It had nothing to do with what occurred after their decision. I am.
So Susan, if you don't mind, let's ask Lucas what that reimbursement was going to be at that point in time, what he felt it was.
I don't think anybody really is going to know the exact amount. I think the appellant seems to be wanting to, has been a good citizen and is trying to cooperate with the bureaucracy. What if we just fix not to exceed amount and then waive the fine as part of our, you know, contribution? Like, you know, they said $2,700, if we said, you know, the city will not exceed $2,000, we waive the fines and part friends and get it taken care of.
You accept that amendment?
I don't know. I guess I'm struggling with the fact that there was an agreement made and someone decided not to live up to it and I struggle with that.
Yeah, and Mr. Mayor.
I just feel, I'm sorry and I feel sorry for her. But there was a deal struck.
Okay, you don't accept that as an amendment, we'll have to do that separately. Ryan, you have a question?
Well, I just, I don't know what happened after the Planning Commission. I know that we heard something about slats that were warping and that this was done. Liz said that she did this in order to preserve costs, not extend them. So I just think it would be appropriate and I appreciate what Randy said because I don't know, I've never heard about, you know, fence slats warping, but it's a black fence and she showed a picture that seemed to show that they were starting to warp. So I just.
That's quite possible.
You know, what happened and maybe we can understand it better to determine whether it's an appropriate amount to reimburse her on.
Okay, well, so you want to hear from the appellant? I don't know.
I would just like to know more about what happened after.
Boards do warp, there's no question that boards will warp. But Heidi, or is it Liz? Would you, have you, what do you, I thought I had, is it Liz? Is that the right name? Yeah, right, Liz Von Haas, I'm talking to Liz. Would you like to address that?
As I said, there was significant warping. It's been about three months since the original revocation. You're right, Randy, it would have been, is that correct, Randy? It would have been the most conservative thing for me to do, to wait to proceed at all until all of this was wrapped up. But at that point, when the Planning Commission handed down their decision, it had been more than two months and I wasn't certain how much longer it had been. And I was watching my investment deteriorate by the day because I wasn't able to finish the installation of the boards on the structure, which would provide the whole thing with rigidity. So both the structure and the boards were warping in the meantime. And I made a judgment call to finish the installation. And honestly, that was, that was partially also based on the fact that working with the staff has been a moving target and this visibility triangle was a very new compliance target, only emerging in the last month or so of this year.
Well, first of all, Mayor, if I can, Liz, I've watched your project and I thought that.
May I finish, Randy, actually?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Continue.
I'm completely committed to the Planning Commission's decision. I've spent, it would have been, I've spent more time and more money and more energy and this is stressful for me to be here. I'm completely committed to working within this process as I have been for the past year, completely committed. I've done everything I believe that the City of Ojai wants a homeowner to do, every step of the way. But working with staff has been a moving target. And if you'll permit me, just a very brief history, the revocation of the original permit does not cite visibility as a concern at all. It only refers to the fact that the lot is both a corner and a through lot and that's what my conversations with the community manager, Seber, centered on at the time. It was only at the Planning Commission hearing, two months later, that staff's position shifted to being centrally about the visibility concern at the northeast corner. So it did not seem wise for me to act on the basis of these negotiations any further until all of this had been resolved formally. So I really felt that it would be the wisest to first complete the fence under what I understood to be the reinstated permit, once the appeal had been approved, and then come to you concurrently and once the financing was worked out for the additional corner visibility portion, comply with that. That was my thinking. And I honest, honestly, completely truthfully, I really have been trying to work within the system in good faith this entire time. It really just has been a moving target.
Okay, thank you, Liz.
Randy's got his hand up.
Yep, Randy, and then we go to.
Liz, I'll talk directly to the appellant, Mayor, thank you. Liz, I just want to say, you know, we all live in town and we've watched you do this beautiful project. And, you know, there isn't a one of us, I was in awe of your deckwork, I was in awe of your woodwork, of your entries, until you painted them black. I thought you were going to do a natural color on them and I would have loved that. But I'm not going to question your color choices, but you've done an outstanding job. And I do agree that you're trying to work with us. Again, the only thing I come back on is, I don't want to get into the construction practices on why your fence is warping. I, you know, I'm not going to talk about green.
He's strong, I know it's a strong back.
So all I'm trying to say though is, you left the planning session and it was a win for all. The next day, you emailed the planning commissioners and thanked them for deliberating and coming to a conclusion and then you act as if you hadn't made an agreement. And that's, I guess that's where I'm stuck. That's why I'm willing to concede half of what you're asking for and waive the fines. So I'm still going to stick with my motion. $1,350 and $1,000, that's technically $2,350 that you're not going to have to, you know, that you're going to recover. So that's all I'm trying to say there.
Okay, this is the last time, Liz, we're not going to negotiate this.
Actually, I don't want to negotiate on the price.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
I have disrespected anyone on the Planning Commission, that's why I wanted to write to them immediately because I do really appreciate the time that they spent and the agreement that they came to and I did not want to step on their toes. I just wanted to do what I felt was the right thing and I needed to do. So I just, I hope that they don't feel like that and I'm sorry that you feel like that.
Thank you.
Well, Susan?
Motion.
At what point can I make a counter motion?
Well, it would be an amendment, not a counter motion. Either that or we vote on the motion. What is your concern?
My amendment would be to waive the fines and give her the full reimbursement based on her good faith efforts, all the mental anguish, all the energy she's put into this. I think when, the difference in cost is.
Then you want to, you need to move for some amendment or vote no on this. Okay, Bill, you have your hand up.
No, I was just kind of making a point of order. We have a motion and if Suz is making a motion to amend, then we need to see if there's a second vote on that amendment.
Is there a second to what Suz is suggesting?
I'll second Suz's motion.
Okay, it's moved and seconded, but that the motion be amended to reimburse the full amount and waive the fine, is that correct?
Yes.
I just want to add that there was, that the visibility triangle was the minimum part of the confusion and the mistakes that the city made on this. The frontages, the letters that went back and forth. Lucas, I love you, buddy, but the, some of the determinations that were written in the letter were not code sections that were recited, they were interpretations of code that added a massive layer of confusion. I think that frankly, if, you know, the mistakes that were made for that amount of cost seems proportionally lower than it could have maybe been. I don't love that whatever happened after Planning went forward, but I'm going to trust the applicant that it saved us money, didn't cost us more money, so I think it would be appropriate to reimburse the full amount.
All right.
You know what the full amount's going to be?
That was the $2,700.
Number right now.
$2,700.
Twenty seven, that was what Suz's motion was for.
That was an estimate.
Okay, full amount.
I believe it was a bid and I would say not to exceed the estimate that we received.
Yes.
That would be not to exceed $2,700, to clarify.
Yes, I believe, I can't read, I couldn't read the bid that Liz put up. I know that it was told $2,700.
But it's okay, it's a not to exceed number, at least it's definite, yeah.
And so we have a, we have an amendment to vote on.
Yeah, okay, is there further discussion? Randy?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify this. I'm the one who made the motion and it was seconded. Do I have a right to say I don't want my motion amended?
We have a right to vote against the amendment, yeah.
In other words, if the amendment passes by majority, then the main motion is amended and then the main motion must still be voted on up or down. If you're opposed to the amendment or the motion, your option is to vote against the amendment and then we see where the chips fall.
Thank you.
Yeah, Randy, there's essentially two choices on the table and let's see which, you know, let's.
Is there any other comment regarding the amendment? If not, I guess do we need a roll call or do we just?
I would recommend a roll call, A, there's money and B, it may be divided.
Okay, Gail, if you're out there, you got a roll call?
Councilmember Wyrick?
No.
Councilmember Haney?
No.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Blatts?
Yes.
Mayor Johnston?
No.
The, I would move to amend the motion to not to exceed the $2,700 estimate and the waiver of the fines.
I thought we just.
That's what we just voted on.
I understood the motion as proposed by the mayor now to be a total maximum of $2,700 with the fines subtracted from that, as opposed to on top of that. Is that correct, Mr. Mayor?
That's correct.
Oh, the fine subtract.
$2,700 net of the fines is your motion. Mayor?
Right, in other words, we're going to help pay for the fence, but the two separate issues. One was the fine and the citation saying that we don't just issue them and then waive them, but the other is, is that we're going to pay for part of the thing. It doesn't, we're getting down, haggling over a few dollars, but that's, it's still in.
Yeah, can we just confirm what the total amount of the fines were? I just want to confirm that it was two $500 fines, correct?
Correct.
Is that correct, that are two?
Yes.
Yeah.
I'll second that motion by the mayor.
Sounds like the same motion that Suz made.
No, it's different, it's different, Randy.
$2,700 total.
Minus the $1,000 fines, it's really, instead of $2,700, it's $1,700.
Right.
Getting a lot closer to your number, Randy, so you should be happy. Okay. No further discussion, let's have a roll call on that.
Mayor Pro Tem Blatts?
Yes.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes.
Councilmember Wyrick?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
No.
Okay, amendment passes, so now the main motion's to be voted on and everybody knows what that is. Okay, roll call?
Councilmember Francina?
No.
Mayor Pro Tem Blatts?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Councilmember Wyrick?
Yes.
Mayor Johnston?
I didn't, couldn't hear you over the bark, was that me you were calling on?
Yes.
Okay, well, yes. Okay, thank you, okay, the motion carries. So now what do we do? Need a resolution adopted or?
The main motion just adopted, affirmed the Planning Commission decision. So that, as I look at it, that included approval of the resolution affirming the PC decision on the land use issue, together with direction to provide up to $2,700 in contribution to include waiving the fines, which were about $1,000.
That wasn't the motion.
Motion was 17, yeah, would be a net.
Motion was up to $2,700 with paying the fines.
Yeah.
Right.
That was the motion.
Seventeen hundred in cash.
Right.
Yeah, except, well, technically what we passed was a $2,700 reimbursement and the $1,000 in fines are still applicable.
Right.
Thank you.
That's our motion, yeah.
Okay, we're done, yeah.
Thank you, Liz.
Sorry for all the red tape and you got caught in all of this, but in the long run, I think it's, you know, good indication of staying with some kind of a policy for public safety on the roads. Okay, next item of discussion is the numbers, what, three? Oh, the coronavirus from the city manager.
Pull up, I have a presentation, give me one second.
Boy, you're pulling that up, I would like to message to the mayor's office in support of Dr. Fauci, the national expert on our pandemic. He has asked that all the governors and the mayors, in the absence of the federal government doing it, to emphasize the importance of wearing masks when in public. And for anybody who's listening to this at home, the order that the city put out, you know, and it's not because we want to penalize anybody, but it is to do a number of things. Most importantly, it is to reduce the spread, it's no guarantee, you don't have to wear one all the time, but when you leave home, you should have one with you. When you go into a store or a closed area or get within six feet of other people, you should put it on and it should say to your neighbors and your friends that the pandemic is not over and that we care about each other. And that is one of the few tools we have available to try to protect the economy. Because if we don't do it, we're going to see a lot of things reversed, I fear. Now, I could be wrong and I hope I am wrong, but after the Labor Day holidays with everybody having a good time, they've had explosions in the contagion and this morning's LA Times even pointed out that Orange County that had done fairly well and Riverside County now is where the numbers are increasing. So we're a long ways from being done and I think the people of Ojai and most of our guests have done a great job. We just have a few people who for some reason have decided this is the one freedom that they need to protect. It's not to not wear their seat belts when they drive in a car or not to buy insurance in order to have a driver's license in the state or all the many other things that we do for the community safety. So I would hope that everybody, not because anybody's saying you can't do it, it's just a really decent thing to do for your neighbors. And I hope that the stores or the businesses recognize that while we're the bad guys by having the order, they are the benefit. they are the beneficiaries to say, do not come into our store and do this because there are a lot of other people who won't come into your store if you're not going to wear masks. So we've had a couple of incidents in town where everybody kind of thought it over and said, yeah, that's right. Yeah, we're sorry this has gone on so long, but we aren't in control of the virus. And probably the only thing that we can do is to, you know, where were we? Uh, six, eight cases about a month and a half ago, and we're now getting close to a hundred. You know, now everybody's not dying and the hospitals are not overrun. But, you know, we've got to do our part. Okay, James, did I give you enough time to get ready?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate the audience.
And thank you, Mr. Mayor, as in Orange County and Riverside County this weekend. So you have me completely freaked out now. Thank you.
Oh, yeah, you better go on this. It's time for you to go into isolation.
But wearing a mask the entire time.
Yeah.
Well, on that point, I think we we've kind of started these updates the last couple of meetings, looking at the trends as, you know, looking at the numbers each month as it progresses. And if you recall, to your point, we had six cases in the uh nine, three, oh, two, three in May, at the end of May. Now, the, you know, that's six cases since the beginning. Obviously, those aren't uh necessarily active cases. In June, that had doubled to fourteen, so that's relatively slow doubling. In July, that had doubled to about twenty nine. And then we saw the last council meeting we had, we we noted a big spike. We had jumped up to eighty two cases. And obviously, I think some news broke after that uh meeting that um it was traced to a couple of um uh facilities in in Ojai and one in Ojai, one in Oakview, and those were the um the causes. But I think the point that we were, we want to make sure to get through to everybody is that that's how fragile this situation is, and uh wearing face coverings hopefully will help to present, prevent a a big spike in numbers. So since then, um, you know, it's only two, two, I think it was, oh, no, it was two weeks ago. I was thinking it was three, but it's two weeks ago. So the uh definitely haven't seen a big spike since then, which is good news. We're at a hundred total cases since the beginning, so eighteen more cases in the last two weeks. But to your point, uh, Mayor, with the the holiday weekend, uh, obviously, we uh, everybody's very cautious. A lot of cities, uh, you know, the beach cities um would had enacted different rules and things to try to prevent uh spread at the beaches. Luckily for us with our um, in a lot of ways, it was unfortunate, but the one fortunate thing about the hundred and uh eighteen, a hundred and nineteen degree weather this weekend was that uh uh the trails were empty. We uh we counted zero people at the trails for almost the whole time. Uh, so uh hopefully, we don't see a a big increase. But um from since the last uh update in August, the positives are these two numbers here, the hospitalized number and the ICU number from seventy three hospitalized to fifty nine and twenty three ICU patients to twelve patients. So um those are two of the big statistics as far as making sure that the hospitals are not overrun. And uh those numbers are trending the right way. So that's a positive. Uh, but obviously, um, we saw with that spike a couple of weeks ago, how how fragile that uh the situation is. Uh, the update this meeting is mostly, I'll I'll try to keep it fairly brief, but I think the big update that we that happened after our last council meeting is that the state released a new tiered system for counties. Uh, and that tiered system is going to change the way that the state uh makes decisions in allowing different counties to open uh different types of businesses. So as you can see from this chart here, uh, almost all of Southern California is in the uh purple widespread group, which is the um tier one, which is the most restricted uh tier. Uh, and to get out of the tier, we we need to lower our um positive cases per per day. Uh, and when, uh, as just an example, um, I uh have a uh a chart that the state put out that has the different sectors, and that's available on the website, cdph.ca.gov. Uh, it's actually pretty interesting if anybody wants to review it, but it has all the different sectors, and it tells you what the changes will be when we move from tier to tier. So for example, um, all retail, when we are in tier one, is limited to a twenty five percent capacity. When we move to tier two, retail can then open to fifty percent capacity. And then from tier three, there's no limit on the capacity uh for tier three and tier four. And so when we talk about, you know, why we want to get our numbers down, uh, it's essentially so that we get to a point where the state allows, you know, um, businesses to open with less restriction. And uh, and, you know, as you mentioned earlier, the face coverings are part of getting to that point. Uh, just a couple of other things. I won't go through every category, but for example, shopping malls have to be limited to twenty five percent capacity with closed food courts. Once we get to tier two, they can open to fifty percent capacity and and have open food courts, but with reduced capacity. Uh, tier one, places of worship um and movie theaters are outdoors only. Uh, when you get into tier two, they can start opening indoors with reduced capacity. So those are just some examples of, you know, when people hear us talking about trying to reduce the number so that we can uh get into the second tier, that's why it's it's uh that's when uh more businesses are going to be able to reopen. So that was a big change. It occurred on, I think it was August thirty first. Um, and uh um, here's a little more information on, uh, again, it's the case rate per hundred thousand residents that is the key factor. And then.
Thought it was six percent. You're saying seven percent now for tier one?
Uh, it's more than seven daily new cases per one hundred thousand residents.
That's seven percent, right?
Uh, it's um, well, our our county has, uh, what is it, eight hundred sixty thousand residents? So about seven percent, but I don't think it's exactly.
Okay, I so the the previous slide said six percent. That's why.
Bill, it's not seven percent. It's a hundred thousand, so it's point zero zero seven percent.
Yeah. Yeah, this slide is the statewide positivity rate.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Okay.
Sorry. So this is by tier. This is what we have to get.
That's the new cases. So so which of those columns is determinative? Positive test percentages or new cases per hundred thousand?
You know, at our Ventura County level, we've been focused on the new cases, but to be frank, I think it's because our positive test rate is there. So I think, you know, we need to get this number down because this number, we're already at that point.
But for the state's tiers, you have to meet both. The county has to meet both of the columns.
So it's either, so it's either or. So if you break out above either one, you're in that, you go up in the tiers.
Yeah, so we are below the eight percent positive tests, or we we have been at at points, but we have not been below the seven daily new.
I see. So you have to get below those metrics for both, and then you can go to the next level.
Yeah, and I had heard just prior to this meeting, I haven't confirmed it, but I had heard that Orange County was uh potentially being identified as moving to the substantial tier, uh, which was news to me. Um, I wasn't interested in that. So, you know, I guess the only reason I'm mentioning that is we are seeing that some counties are moving, have been able to move.
So I'm sorry. I'm sorry for the confusion. Is that that's awfully stringent, four to seven daily new cases per hundred thousand? That doesn't really, really distinguish in terms of uh whether, for example, they're contagious or not.
Mm hmm.
You can test positive and not be contagious.
Is this chart uh from from the state or is this something we created?
No, this is from the state.
Huh. Or does, oh, daily, though. So then you figure that I don't know how they calculate it. That's.
The last column is cumulative and the middle column is daily.
Yeah, it's pretty stringent. So.
I don't see it happening.
Yeah. Okay, is there any more, James?
Um, just a couple of things. We are working with the county to have to launch weekly testing in the Ojai Valley, which uh we are excited about. Um, we have tentative plans. We're still working with the county, but we're trying to to launch it at Sarzati Park, and it'll probably be on a specific day of the week. So we're uh, we've been working with the county, and we're hoping to have an announcement on that in the next couple of days. So we'll post that on our website and our Facebook page. But that's something we're excited about is having testing in the valley. And then longer term, they're also, we're also working on antibody testing with the county as well. So um, so we will be posting updates on that in the next couple of days. And then, you know, some, we've done this item. Uh, we wrote this as the coronavirus update. It's been an emergency update and and the recommendation talks about the emergency situation. So we did want to just note a couple of other things for residents. We had some emergency situations pop up over the weekend with the over one hundred degree uh forecasts for the three day weekend. So uh, we wanted to just uh remind everyone that when the weather forecast is over a hundred degrees, we are planning to open the cooling center at the Boyd Center. And uh, it's a challenge right now for everyone, which is why a lot of cities aren't doing it right now because of the extra social distancing requirements, the, you know, having to take temperatures and screening when people come in. It really is making everything we do more difficult. Uh, but we're happy to announce. You know, we've launched it this weekend. Uh, we had positive results. We had seventeen people who stayed. Uh, you know, when it, when it was, you know, one eighteen or or I've heard different numbers. That was what we saw at our public work yard. And so uh, we are planning to continue to to operate those when it is over a hundred degrees. Uh, and um um, and then we have a a potential upcoming situation we wanted to notify people about, which is with those hot, with the hot weather and the potential fire risk, we've had a meeting this morning with Southern California Edison. And they are looking at potential public safety power shut offs, the PS.
This is the wind, right? The wind, right?
Yep. And so in place right now through Wednesday, uh, end of day Wednesday, they are uh considering whether to issue a public safety power shut off. Um, we have, uh, there are parts of Ojai that are included in that. Uh, I think it affects about seven thousand residents of Ventura County, but only a, you know, a smaller portion of that within Ojai. So we wanted to remind everybody to sign up for VC Alert now, sign up for the city's text messages now. And then uh, Southern California Edison website, uh, they have a website that's um that we could provide as well. We'll post on the web, on our website, but they have a public safety power shut off website. And when they do issue the the um public safety power shut off, it'll identify where they're um they're, they are, uh, they have a kind of a response crew that will be dispatched somewhere in the county. So that information will be on their website as well. So unfortunately, uh, we're seeing with this coronavirus pandemic, you know, it's not just one emergency at a time. We're we're dealing with multiple issues, but um so far, I think all told, uh, we've had um, you know, pretty good responses to those, and we have avoided any major issues. So we're hopeful that, you know, everybody sign up for VC Alert and the city's texts and and stay up to date uh because we don't, you know, uh, know exactly uh how the uh weather will, uh, you know, whether it'll improve over the next couple of days.
James, could you put up the slide with the purple and the different categories again?
Yes. This one or the or this?
Uh, either one's fine. I just want everybody to know. I, in the email today from the county, they they gave us those rates. Ventura County is currently seven point eight on a purple tier. So that's the new cases where it's seven point eight per hundred thousand. But on the other one, we're at four point eight percent of tests that are positive, which is the third tier, which is the orange tier. So purple's the highest, orange is third, and that's as of this evening, just so everybody knows, you know.
Yeah. And that's why I raised the issue of the daily new case, because, you know, there's been a lot of discussion nationwide over, one, uh, there's been some problem in some jurisdictions with false positives. And two, there's been discussion about how new cases, especially with the lag that we have, uh, they're trying to get to, you know, a faster result on the cases because um they're and they're trying to to try to distinguish cases that are contagious and not contagious.
Yeah, Bill, just for an example, what it's the county said today, eleven point eight percent of the lab collection that were still tested today were from September first or earlier.
Right.
I mean, that is a that is way too long a lag to get any reasonable data and a lot of help. People should still test, and it's really important not to, I've had a lot of people say, well, what difference does it make? Not all the tests take that long to come back. I I I know Randy's been there. I've been there. My test took three days to come back, which is still within the window. If you believe you've been exposed, that's you don't, you don't have to think you're exposed to go get a test, but that is still a reasonable window. So don't think that they're all like that. But yes, I mean, and and trust, I I know I've talked to James about this, but the state, the county, every level, including us, are trying to get that turnaround time faster, but um it is longer than we want it to be, but it doesn't mean your test will take that long necessarily.
Yeah, the the one other point with this is what we were told is that the state uh that you'd have to get under this number for, I believe it was fourteen days uh to to move from one tier to the next. So.
Right, I was gonna say, there had to be a duration, so you're not opening, closing, opening, closing, opening. You gotta have a sustained period of deduction.
Yep, and we are very close. And so, you know, hopefully with the, I think if we avoid any issues over the holiday weekend, that we we will get to this number and and we should be able to maintain it. But obviously, part of that is everybody wearing face coverings and and doing their part, so.
James, on your next picture, I just had two questions.
This one?
Yeah, the next one with the rec center.
Oh, yes.
The rec center, I just want to know is, we're letting the air out on the left photo. And on the right photo, I wanted to know who's in charge of the remote. How how did you work that with the seventeen people?
The funny thing about it is the first person who came in said, can we turn it off? You know, can we just turn the TV off? I'd rather take a nap. And then everybody else kind of followed their uh their cue. So we we had the TVs off, but it's not a bad setup. But I think it's just, it really is hard to explain to people that we have to rethink everything, which is why a lot of, I mean, look around, a lot of the, you know, charitable organizations and everybody are really having a hard time. Uh, I was talking to the school the other day, the school district, and they were talking about, you know, how in the world can they operate school buses, you know, anytime soon? And it really is, we have to rethink everything. We we don't have volunteers, so we, you know, we're really relying on our staff to to step up. And and I wanted to give them credit that they really did step up.
Hats off, hats off to you and staff, James. You guys are doing a wonderful job.
Thank you.
Safe bike paths. That it was.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
James, I have one question for you regarding the testing and the turnaround. Uh, what Ryan was saying, you know, is correct that there's a variety of, you know, from almost the same day uh for some people, I I think within the hour or something for if you're in the White House. Uh, but for us, we don't know. So is there some instruction? Does anybody know when they took the test? Did anybody say you should self-isolate until you get your results? And that's the key. Uh, if you want the the test to mean anything, you you have to get out of circulation because if it comes back positive, then, you know, the the trace has to go on.
To that, what what's interesting is the um, the staff didn't say anything to me at the three places I've been. But the people that you live with and that are around you are actually more inclined to tell you to isolate and at least a week. I know that I quarantined myself a couple of times um in house because of my wife demanding it. So, and I think that that's that's who's, that's who's who's creating the environment of safety is our loved ones.
Yeah, let's hope that everybody's got a loved one, you know, that'll help them because otherwise, yeah, okay. Uh, anything else, James?
No, that's it this week.
Okay, we, the next item is the designation of a voting delegate to the lead California cities. Uh, it looks like this is going to be a virtual meeting, or is there any uh optimism that they're going to actually hold a convention?
No, I believe they they officially said it's virtual this year.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, real quick, I just wanted to make sure I, we we used to, are we not discussing anything regarding the eviction uh moratorium?
Oh, no, we can. We can. That's a good point. Uh, let's go back to that.
I apologize. I just. Oh, you know, yeah, and and the city attorney and I had discussed with the uh, the state issued their uh update last week. Federal government issued their update last week. We heard kind of conflicting perspectives on whether uh the cities would, you know, be preempted by either of those. And so the city attorney and I discussed it last week and had talked about bringing it at the next meeting when we've had the chance to really analyze how all those new, you know, the state and federal interact with the cities. Uh, I don't know, uh, City Attorney Summers, if you have any update on that. I know we talked.
Yeah, so uh, I sent a memo to the council, uh, which you should have received yesterday that did provide that analysis. The short answer is that the feds do not preempt anything at the local level. Uh, the federal CDC order did not preempt local or state or a city or county eviction orders. And the state order preempted a piece, but not all of our existing order. Recall that the existing executive order number four imposes an eviction moratorium for residential. Recall that the existing executive order number four imposes an eviction moratorium for residential and commercial tenants in Ojai who can show that they've had financial hardship due to the COVID nineteen pandemic and meet certain requirements. And it allows them to be protected from eviction through the local emergency plus six months, provided they then pay the money back within that six months. The piece that has been preempted is for residential tenants only, the repayment period. The state now requires that for indefinite repayment periods imposed by a local protection, that repayment period must begin on March first, twenty twenty one and would then be six months. The state allows up to a year, but the local would control. So that needs, that would, that has already preempted that piece of our order. The city can, we cannot modify the order to reflect that because the state has also provided that no city or county can modify an eviction protection order in a window from August nineteenth through January thirty first of next year. But what we can do would be have a letter go out on the city manager's letterhead that would explain what piece of our order has been preempted by the state and what that means. So that local residents could, could review our order in a letter and understand what, what the rule is. The other options would be to take no action and allow that to apply by default, but leaving potential confusion because residents wouldn't recognize upfront that a portion of our order has been preempted. Or third would be to rescind everything and have just the state's protections control for residential tenants. Note that the state, neither the state nor the federal evictions moratoriums protect commercial tenants. So that remains a choice for the city. At present, we have commercial eviction protections and can continue those without question. And just to recap, the federal order prevents evictions of persons who have documented financial hardship due to the pandemic, are able to pay the rent as they can and qualify at an income level. If you're single, it's under ninety nine thousand dollars per year. Or if you're married or head of household filing jointly, it's a hundred and ninety eight thousand dollars per year. Or if you don't make enough to file a federal income tax return period, or if you received one of the federal CARES Act stimulus checks. If you hit any of those income triggers, then you're protected under the federal order. Note that the federal order does not limit itself to federally subsidized housing. It applies to all housing in the country, all residential housing. Second, the state order is slightly different. It protects anybody who can meet certain financial hardship requirements, also due to the pandemic, no income limit. And it applies, has this graduated payment requirement that for people who are unable to make, and some were all of their rent payment for March first through the end of August, then they are protected. But starting September first, tenants are required to pay at least twenty five percent of the rent. But not monthly, they have to pay it within a period starting September first and ending February first. Then if they make the twenty five percent payment, they're protected. If they don't, then they can be evicted starting February first.
September twenty.
Randy?
Yeah, September twenty twenty.
Yeah, I wanted to clarify that because that, I think that's a gray area for a lot. So it starts September twenty, runs through, it looks like January thirty first, twenty twenty one. And what you're saying that the tenant doesn't have to pay twenty five percent monthly. Could you clarify that?
Sure. The tenant does not need to pay the twenty five percent monthly to continue to be protected. They just have to have paid the twenty five percent by February first to be protected from eviction.
Or September, October, November, December, twenty five percent of that five month period?
Yes, that's correct. Twenty five percent of the five months rent owed in that time. To then be protected.
Ryan?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to bring this up because in, in my profession, I've had a lot of people asking. It's incredibly confusing. Matt, I appreciate the memo. I had a conversation with Matt about it. I'm pretty sure I have less than my understanding of it now that I've read everything and talked about it. But I, I, I think to, to short circuit some of this, what I, what I would like to boil down if possible and then make a motion is just that if there is a way for us to clarify, now Matt, I don't necessarily want to, I don't necessarily think sending a, I don't know if you, like a city manager letter to every resident is necessarily the best way to do that. But if there was some way for us to at least make the timeline on our moratorium consistent with what is preempted by the other rules, so that there is at least one timeline written down and not multiple ones, that might at least give us a level of clarity or give the public a level of clarity. And then we can always review this and modify it as needed at a further meeting. But as Randy just pointed out, and as Matt tried to explain, and as the memo reads, it is all over the place as far as these timelines of twenty five percent. And of course, our moratorium says an indefinite period of time when the emergency is lifted plus six months, which is not the law anymore. So I don't know what the easiest way is to do that. But my motion would be if we could modify our current order to be consistent with the timeline, then I would like, if we can, do that as soon as possible.
Certainly, we can figure out the mechanics of doing it. And I should clarify, it wouldn't be a letter to everybody, be a letter to the, a, a, an open letter to go on the website, et cetera. But we can figure out the best way to do that.
Susan, did you?
Did Randy, did Ryan make a motion?
No, there, well, do you want a motion?
If it'll make it easier, I would make a motion that we modify our current, if we can, although it's an executive order, but we modify the current existing residential eviction moratorium order to be consistent with the timelines as have been preempted by state law.
I'll second that.
Matt, is that, is that, did I get that right?
Yeah, the only issue is it may not be to modify the order itself because the state's preempted that, but it would be to create a, a cover, cover memo on top.
That, that, yeah, without, without us violating the modification moratorium, we want to modify. It's very difficult.
Not modify.
I think Matt, you understand what I mean, but to add some clarity out there, so at least our citizens who are wondering what's going on and are calling because they know there was an expiration of some rules and a federal rule and whatnot, there might be a place to go to get an answer on our website.
It's a true, it's a true MOU, a memorandum of understanding.
There you go.
Okay, well, we don't. Can practice law, I don't. So whatever, you got a, what, a movement, a motion in a second? Is there any objection to the motion? If not, Matt and the city manager, James, you know what being asked. So that we don't make it more complicated than it already is.
Thank you.
Okay, who wants to be the designated voting delegate to the League of California Cities meeting? You can do it from your home. Crickets.
I'll do it, Mayor.
Oh, you're a good man. Okay.
Good to suggest you do it, Randy.
Does anybody want to fight Randy for it?
I think it's a good choice.
Okay, yeah, I think it's an excellent choice. Thank you. You're a big.
You know, they don't have a James Hahn that comes to your house though, from League of California Cities.
All right, we need to have a not to exceed number on James Hahn's time going to Randy's house. Okay.
The question is, do we need an alternate?
Ryan is an excellent choice for an alternate.
I think I'm busy that day.
Yeah, Bill, Bill apparently is a good one. He's usually.
Bill, it was, this was you and Randy last year. I'm the, I'm usually.
Yeah, we were switching. Susan, you sure you don't want to do it?
I'm scag. You guys are listening.
If nobody else will do it, I'm just looking at the dates, the dates.
So you're, you're my alternate girl.
Twelve thirty.
All right, all right.
Twelve thirty AM on Friday, October.
It's twelve thirty PM. Sorry, that's a typo.
We can switch, Randy.
It's a New Year's Eve party.
I'll be all.
If it's on Zoom, I, I can do it on Friday on Zoom. If that's, am I reading that right?
It is.
Everybody will be on Zoom.
Okay, I'll be fine.
Okay, so Randy is the voting member and Susan is the alternate, right?
Right. So if I can't make it, Susan, I'll give you a ring.
And you'll tell me a few days ahead.
Randy's already working up his excuse.
I'm sure he's gonna make it already.
Good luck, guys. Thank you. Okay, number five. Oh, yes, the fire hazard severity map. I think this came from all directions. It did come, the council did say to bring it back at some point. My recollection of the last meeting we had on it, that comments were made and even some of the testimony said that now that our building code had been amended, that the significance of a, the fire map was maybe potentially redundant, or maybe not quite that, but at least not have the same relevance. But we did hear from our good friend at the newspaper who called out, not by name, but some of us are two faced in our climate protection and our greenhouse gas program. So we have it on here to talk about, and it seems to me that we have the same two major questions that I haven't heard the answers to, which are, you know, how does this make the town safer? What can we do if we do this that'll be better for the community and, you know, prevent people from, you know, burning up versus what's the impact on the underwriting community? I was told that the underwriting community had already figured it out and that they weren't, either weren't writing new policies or that they had increased their rates. But so I guess, but Bill, were you, you and Susan or who?
Well, I think that we, there was a longstanding recommendation from the B A B to the council and the usual protocol is that, you know, if there's a recommendation done, we've, we asked the B A B for a recommendation. They provided it. So it was time to just deal with their recommendation, I think. You know, and I, I, I believe Tom is there to explain the staff position on this. And then I believe the chair of the B A B was going to be making himself available. Is that not the case?
Yes, and he, and both the building official and the chair of the BAB are now on.
Okay, good. So I thought we at least ought to hear the recommendation there.
Is Chris Danch in the, in the meeting?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
And Bill Miley and Lynn Martin also, Heidi Whitman, are they all?
Who?
I, I have Heidi Whitman, Bill Miley, Lynn Martin and Chris Danch as people that would like to comment on this when we get ready for.
So Heidi Whitman is, is logged in. Bill Miley is not. I think he's just submitted his comments.
Oh, okay. We saw those in writing. Okay, how do we proceed, guys?
Well, I, I, either the, either the chair of the B A B that made the recommendation or the building official, I would suggest since we asked for the recommendation from the B A B, we.
I think that's. Agreed. So, Mr. Ulrich, I see you're out there. You're on deck.
Good evening.
You're ready to go.
As Councilman Wirick referenced, the B A B made these recommendations. The B A B also made recommendations that the council has already adopted relative to Title Nine building code revisions that are in support of hardening the community, so to speak. Now, that really only applies to new construction or as the community development department would describe it as development. So from a practical perspective, since there isn't a whole lot of new development in the city, ninety nine point some percent of the community has no, and this is based on the Cal Fire map of two thousand and seven, has really made no efforts or improvements towards fire hardening of the community. So we're just like everybody else that's burned up in the interim. Since, and we obviously came pretty close in two thousand and seventeen. So the question, the two questions that were referenced as far as what are the implications as far as insurance? And what are the implications as far as cost to the, to, to, to city property owners? I just want to start and I'll end with the same perspective. We haven't done anything aside from the Title Nine changes to harden the community. We haven't done anything that actually even acknowledges and reflects the high fire hazard of the community. Since we're basing everything on a fire map that is irrelevant for all intensive purposes, it's inaccurate. And also, as has been pointed out, from an insurance perspective, the insurance industry moves to a completely different assessment. They don't rely on that fire map. The fire map is for the city to address its capacity at this point to burn. And we haven't done anything about that. I'd like that the, the folks who have written, for example, from Foothill Road, excuse me, from North Signal Street, that's another fire corridor. Many of the folks that are up there have houses with trees that overhang their residences. And in the, in the event of an amber cast, their house is going to become involved very quickly because the trees that are overhanging it will become involved very quickly. All of this has been gone over relative to risk with Ventura County Fire. And we're looking at simply, when are the discussions the, going to be reflected with an adoption of a fire map that actually reflects the risk?
Well, let me, I'll kick off on this a little bit. I, I consider, you know, fire mitigation and to be a highest priority. But having said that, one, I would say, I don't know how many other people, but I know I personally have spent considerable money doing exactly what you say about hardening my home. I'm right with the interface of a major kind of wildlife cor- corridor down by Creek Road. I don't know how many other people have or whether we, Tom, whether we have any kind of monitoring thing to see, you know, who's putting in glass skylights? Who's putting in dual pane windows? Who's, you know, putting in the Vulcan screens? I think that's kind of what you're getting at, isn't it, Bill? Ulrich, that, to do those things.
Actually, actually, it's not, Mayor. It's, what I'm talking about has to do with brush clearance, fire clearance of the, 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 the foliage. We, where you're at, obviously, where your house is sited is you're at the bottom end of a, of, of what I care, not a wildlife corridor as much as a fire corridor. Stewart Canyon is like a direct path through the, right through this heart of the community. And it is, it is highly flammable to date.
Okay, but how does this map address that? That's what I don't get.
Well, it actually declares so that everyone's in agreement and, 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 and in agreement that the entire community is flammable. At this particular point, that two thousand and seven map that we are still using as the document, the guy, the, the policymaking document, if you will, does not reflect reality and it was inaccurate when it was generated.
And who, who generated that map, Cal Fire?
Cal Fire, but they didn't, they were, you know, they've been sort of, well, according to them, and according to the three Cal Fire folks who showed up in, on December nineteenth before the B A B, you know, they've been operating under kind of a, a budget constraints relative to map making. And they kind of took a swing and a miss at, at the two thousand and seven version. It wasn't, and they acknowledged that it wasn't accurate then and certainly isn't accurate thirteen years later.
Okay, and what does the Fire Protection District have to say about it? It seems like everybody should know now, if they didn't before, two things happened. One, look at the map from the Thomas Fire. Everybody's seen that. So they should know that we're all in the high fire zone with or without a map. And then when the Paradise or the Campfire up north shows what happens once it gets inside. So we know that as a conclusion, how do we go about getting this, you know, combustible brush more than what we're, we're currently doing? Does the map give us some kind of authority that we don't now have?
Yeah, I think it does. It also gives a sense, since it's one thing to acknowledge these are the conditions. But if the leadership, governance won't actually adopt it, it's kind of like, I mean, what kind of exercise is it? You're, you're saying, yes, we got a situation, but you know, our documents that would reflect. But, you know, our documents that would reflect that, well, you know, we don't need to do anything about it because it might have some implications that we're concerned about.
Okay, but like, let's take insurance rates. That's what most people are calling up about.
Already been done, already been addressed.
Therefore, you know, doesn't everybody know? Somebody knows we're in a high fire area and everybody knows that they they're paying the rates already. So I don't get what the map does other than us pronouncing that we're in a higher fire zone, with or without a map.
I don't think insurance rates are the arbiter or the controlling document. They're not.
Well, it doesn't seem to be one.
Well, that's because that's because the council hasn't adopted one.
Okay, well, let's hear from the council then.
Could I, Mayor, could I ask if the building official wants to add anything to the presentation from the V A B chair?
Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Sure. As far as where we are in a very high fire area. So we have to take that into consideration, obviously. With the building codes, what we have done is harden the exterior as best as we can and adopted the high fire building codes in both commercial, or let's use non-residential and residential building codes. What this allows us to do is to protect, harden the exterior of our structures as they come in for modifications. Alterations, new construction, or a simple window changeout now has to be brought up to high fire standards. That would mean tempered tempered glass possibly, Class A roof. Vent sizes that are installed have to be smaller. So an amber can't get into those attic spaces and crawl spaces to to actually, you know, ignite a fire inside the structure. We've required hardening of the exterior using materials, whether that's applying a stucco to the underside of an east. Again, building code is a reactive kind of thing. So anything that is current is still to code until it's modified. So that's where we're at right now. And as and I, you know, the BAB and myself have worked endlessly to get the codes where they need to be, get everybody to fall under this, that that the BAB did a great job getting to this point. The what I I I have spoken with the I S O regarding the insurance fire maps. What I was told by them is they don't instruct anybody to use any any companies to use any specific fire map. They are going to use any what they determine as an individual company as a reasoning for their risk. That's the determination. That's all that I was told, which would make more sense. Possible other. James, I don't know. You want me to continue or you want?
Can you just explain real quick? Because one thing that adopting the fire map would do, to my understanding, is it would would implement that Public Resource Code Section 4291. And can you just speak to what that means? And what what are we doing currently with that?
I don't have that code right in front of me.
It's in our report. It's the maintaining defensible space of 100 feet from each side and the front and rear of the structure. So essentially, it's it's requiring us to enforce the defensible space of at least 100.
Correct, and that's in the very high fire severity zone. And we've been enforcing cutting grass down throughout the city, as you're aware. And we encourage people to see if, you know, if they do see grass that's getting or vegetation that's increasing in size, contact the city and we'll go out and investigate it. And if we feel that it is excessive, then we'll send them a letter and have them cut it down. That's been our procedure.
Mayor, could I ask about that?
Well, I'll come back to you, Bill. Suzie, you had your hand up.
I just heard him say that's in the high fire area. So is there going to be? Are we still going to distinguish between a house at the top of North Signal and a house in more in downtown Ojai, you know, at the lower end, close to town? Because some of those houses have very small yards. And I know there's residents that are concerned that they will have to get rid of all their landscaping, the cooling trees, all of that.
Right.
And that's a big concern. So can you address that?
I can address that. That's beyond the scope of a building code. That's got to be determined through through, you know, what you guys determine. That can probably Matt can probably answer on that. Be implemented implemented through changes in the municipal code by enforcing tree trimmings over chimneys. If somebody drives by and sees a branch that's within 10 feet of a chimney, make that a violation. You know, and somebody.
Some of those things already in that when I get my notice from the fire department, I the. Is it a question of enforcement as opposed to creating some kind of new rules and laws that we don't already have?
There's two questions. One is enforcement of the existing requirements, which the fire department does to an extent, and some may wish more, city could do more. Second question is whether to impose one set of standards or differential standards. As I understood the question from Councilmember Francina, it was whether the proposal from the B A B would apply the same rule at the top of Signal as in the heart of the downtown. And the answer is yes. The proposal from the B A B is to apply the very high fire hazard severity zone designation to the entire city except for Semin Hill. That would that would require this all the requirements that apply to development in very high fire hazard severity zones across that entire area. The council could, if it wished, adopt further separate standards graduated within the different parts of the city if desired.
Why is, may I ask a question, Mayor?
Yes, and then I'm going to go to Bill.
Why is a persimmon hill exempt?
I would defer back to the Building and Police Board Chair on the recommendation from the.
The two acre parcels or two and a half acre parcels is part of it, I would assume. Do we have an answer for that? If we don't, we could, that should be one of the things put on the list. But I've talked with the Fire Protection District and they basically say the whole place is, you know, at risk. And everybody who lives here should know that. So it seems to me when we campaigned for Measure C to get some money so that the city would start being a lot more active in enforcing the regulations we have, primarily, you know, getting rid of the wood piles up against the house, maybe even providing some small grants to help people put in the Vulcan screens, an educational program to keep impressing on people that we live in a high fire zone if it gets inside the town. You know, you talk to any fire expert on the what? The amber cast or whatever they what's that other thing? They used Firebrand, you know, the amber. Those travel, they could travel completely across the city from one side to the other and drop any place in between. So it's not like, you know, that we can surgically remove certain and say, you don't, you're not part of it. So now that we know that, everybody in town should know that. Sounds to me like this is more of a adopt the map in order to impress upon our citizenry that they're in a fire zone. But, you know, I just I'm not getting the benefit of that. Bill.
Yeah, to build on that comment, I'm I'm a little confused reading the staff report on this. Let me start with this point because that's part of Public Resource Code 4291. Reading the staff report, there seems to be a degree of discretion involved. Where, for example, it says this paragraph does not apply to single specimens or trees or other vegetation that are well-pruned and maintained. It talks about a test of whether it would support wildlife burning. It says the intensity of fuels management may vary within the 100-foot perimeter of the structure. And so let me just finish my long question because it's the answer has to do with what is the does this give us a tool for doing more enforcement when we need to do it? Does it still give us the discretion and the flexibility to not impose, you know, standards that don't make any sense? And I, as I'm reading this, it says, according to Cal Fire, it would be implied that the requirements that apply to state recommended areas would be extended to the more restrictive areas within the city with respect to both Public Resource Code 4290 and 4291. And then when you get to the other paragraphs, it says would apply, not imply that it would be extended. In other words, I'm trying to understand how much? What are we actually mandating here? And how much local discretion? Are we getting a tool that allows us to go into a five acre property that is very brush covered and represents a danger to all the surrounding property owners if it's not thinned out? Or, for example, when it says road standards for fire equipment access, are we losing our discretion about the width of driveways? I I guess I'm trying to understand what are we gaining in terms of a tool? And what are we giving up in terms of discretion? And I don't really understand reading the staff report. Is there any reasonable answer to that?
Well, I'll ask a question that follows on what you're saying. Don't we already have some authority on when you described? Because I think we do have some properties in town. And that's maybe what the BAB was looking at, where there's a lot of brush on it and always taking care of it. But the weed abatement program, I mean, surely the map itself isn't going to do it. It may be the blueprint for doing it, but it will not by itself be the tool unless.
It gives us more authority.
Well, yeah, unless it gives us more authority and does it. What are the other cities doing in the in the area?
So I think, you know, like regarding the defensible space of 100 feet, we are already enforcing that. I guess the the adoption of the very high fire hazard severity zone would require us to enforce that as along with the other items listed in in Public Resource Code 4290 and 4291. And again, the challenge for us is we don't have a fire expert on staff. So we've been working with Cal Fire on this. And the the position is that adopting the very high fire hazard severity zone would require us to then enforce Public Resource Code 4290 and 4291. And whereas now we aren't necessarily required to do it, but we're requiring the defensible space, for example.
But it gives us any more authority?
Authority to do it. Bill, you're.
Would it give us any more authority? Was that was that the the question?
One of the questions, you know, what is the power of this? And in addition to what is the impact? I think that's what Bill Wirick was getting at.
Yeah. Public Resource Code 4291 adds additional specificity to the powers. But the city does have the existing power to declare a site or a property that has a dangerous amount of vegetation and nuisance and pursue it as such. 4291 adds fairly specific requirements and a fairly specific set of additional particular requirements. But the city can still declare an overgrown site a nuisance and pursue it as such.
Yeah, we can do it if we had a code enforcement in the program. Bill Ulrich.
Okay, several several points. The 100 feet, and this is in any particular order, 100 feet of defensible space also that that clause says or to the property line. Because not all property is going to conform to that 100 feet, notwithstanding.
Have to rely on the cows.
Right now, the that high fire hazard zone, according to the existing map, applies to the north side of Sunset Drive. It does not apply to the south side of Sunset Drive. So 30 feet away, completely different set of rules. Whether they're enforced or not by the city, as it is right now, if you drive up North Signal Street, you will see any number of various conditions because the city does not have a consistent basis for enforcement. Or actually, with lacking a high fire hazard severity, the city lacks any consistency. And that's what you're getting from it, the adoption. Because right now you got nothing. And 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 since we're a complaint-based governance structure, someone has to complain about it or perhaps the potentiality of it is being so egregious that fire or code compliance might make note of it. But there's a there's several parcels on North Signal Street that you can't even see the extent of the parcel or the extent of the fire hazard on it unless you go onto the property or you're looking at it from a drone. As it is right now, there isn't anything besides the individuals' interest in protecting their own structures. And not everybody is aware, not everybody's interested, not everybody wants to spend the money.
Right, but so but I guess my the underlying question continues to be, we know that that exists and it should be addressed. Is it a matter of enforcing the codes and things we have? Or is it a matter of not having any authority to deal with it if we don't adopt this fire map?
You don't have consistent code to enforce it because the city has is based on, let's put it this way, the 2007 fire map isn't enforced as it is.
What'd you say, isn't?
Is not.
Yeah, okay. And so it's going to not be enforced.
Yeah, it's it's like it's a meaningless document and it's an inaccurate document.
Okay, Randy, you had your hand up.
I just, there's a lot to digest in this conversation. I'm glad we're having it. I've actually ridden with Bob Daddy a couple of times around town and looked at North Signal and looked at a lot of these places that that I would agree are 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 problem areas. And I'm not sure. I know we haven't done anything in the past. I think a lot of that has to do that we really haven't assigned code enforcement to it. And now we do have a code enforcement officer who's actually working and functioning. So we might improve in that area. Other than that is, if we go to is there? I guess that maybe this goes to back to Bill's question is, are there a set of guidelines or a set of standards or a set of rules and regulations that Cal Fire puts out or someone has created in a high fire zone? Someone, William, you can answer that if you'd like to. But is there a criteria if you do it? These are the things that you need to do.
Yes.
Because if it was, it should have been submitted in our packet so that we knew what we were trying to achieve. Right now, it seems like we're trying to put an umbrella over the city, but we don't have the handle and we don't have the branches supporting the umbrella to to support it. So so that's where I think the mayor comes in is why are we putting this umbrella when we don't have the structure to support it? I'd like to know what the structure looks like. And I think that goes to what Councilman Wirick was saying is, what's the criteria? Or if it's a state standard, do we have anything that allows us to be creative and to be responsive to the uniqueness of our community? That so I would be interested in seeing something of that nature come back to us. Someone talked about the map not being readable, but the reality is that we're talking about the whole city. We're talking about the whole city. It doesn't really.
By the way, Persimmon Hill is included. So I don't know how that was misread.
Yeah, I would think when you said whole city that I was going by the whole city myself, so.
Well, considering considering the hour, guys, considering the hour, and we have three or four people that are waiting to talk to us. Do we hear from them and then we can come back to this? Okay, James, does Gail have? I think Heidi Whitman's on the top of the list I've got. Is she out there? I bet she's not out there for a long time. I'm sorry about that.
I'm up here.
Oh.
Good evening, members of the city council. So this issue is really about the lack of information on what you're voting for. When I spoke to your council in January about this item, it was very clear that the city did not know the answers to a lot of these questions and did not have the data that was needed in order to make a reasonable decision on this item. I really, in reading the staff report, feel that that is still the case. My husband and I have lived on North Signal for 30 years. In that time, we have had a couple of fires that have encroached on Ojai. We've been evacuated one time. So my understanding in my reading of this would mean that we would need to cut down every single one of our oak trees, which is one of the reasons that we bought our home. And I really do not think that the council has given this adequate time to discuss with the residents of Ojai on what adoption of this map really means. We have friends in Santa Barbara who have lost their fire insurance or who now pay $20,000 a year through the Fair Plan to get insurance. There is no mention of. There is no mention of whether or not this would affect your ability to get insurance. There are also some white papers out there that talk about your property values going down if this sort of thing is adopted. So I guess it's just really not clear what this really does to the community. I think that it's only fair that people that are potentially affected have an ability to work with the city before such a thing is adopted. I will say that you cannot see my house from the street. That is the way we purchased it. And as I said, it's 100 years old now. Does that mean we have to cut down everything on our property so that you can see my house? I, I just don't think you have enough information to vote on this. And I would like to see a better, more open process with the residents and the property owners in town so that, before you make this decision. So that, thank you very much.
Thanks. Bill Miley submitted his comments in writing. Lynn Martin, is Lynn out there?
Is there, is there anybody else on the line? Okay, Lynn Martin's not there, just Chris Danch is the only person left.
Okay, Chris is here? Okay, tell Chris he's on.
Okay.
And Mayor, what is Chris speaking to?
The fireman.
He's the Chair of the Fire Safety Council.
I understand that, I, I know, but he had sent us an, an email with an application for something. Does the fire map have to do with his application?
I don't know, while we hear from him and see.
He's on.
Okay, Chris, are you out there?
Chris, you are on if you, if you can hear us. It doesn't look like you are on mute.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, we can hear you now, Chris. Go for it.
Can you guys hear me?
Yeah. They're us.
Hello there?
Hi.
I got connectivity problems. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that. Can we set the timer? For some reason, I wasn't getting any feedback from you guys. Thank you. Okay, well, I'm, I'm coming, I'm, I'm coming here tonight as the Executive Director of the Ojai Valley Fire Safe Council. And I can speak directly to the, the idea of the map. I don't see any problems with its adoption, whether it be from a planning perspective or risk mitigation or insurance. But I don't see it as being as much use for the very rare reason stated, it's outdated. And most importantly, it lacks the granularity necessary for local planning. So what the Fire Safe Council is, is working on with various funding sources, starting with CAL FIRE, is to initiate a fine scale risk mapping layer project for our area, actually the whole county, which is a sizable project. It's probably in the half million dollar range to do this, but it's desperately needed. And the Ventura County Fire Protection District wants to collaborate on this because it's necessary. The CAL FIRE maps are virtually useless in that regard. So for local planning, we need this kind of focus and this kind of data collection. Like Heidi says, you don't have the data. I also want to distinguish between where you talk about defensible space and fire clearance, that's a different issue from ember cast and home hardening. Because once you have a fire storm, an ember event like the Thomas Fire, then defensible space doesn't make any difference anymore. It, it's overwhelmed. Okay, so in terms of fire hardening of homes from a house out approach is what's necessary for an ember cast, then you're looking at structure ignition, ignition potential assessments. We're working on funding for that, waiting here on a, on a USDA grant right now to train people to go out and do this and collect the data we need, which would support other funding efforts to help people make the modifications. And, you know, giving tiered recommendations on how to do that depending on, you know, the needs. So the fine scale programs, right, fine scale mapping is very, very important for us to do this, and we are seeking that funding as we speak. We are also working with a nonprofit down in, headquartered in San Diego, United Policy Holders, this goes to the insurance issue. They have their RAP program, which is wildfire risk and asset protection program. And that's working directly with insurance companies and the committee, and the Department of Insurance to work on setting standards that can be accepted by the insurance companies to provide incentive to homeowners. So what can be done that would actually reflect in availability and affordability of insurance? So I'm sort of coming out of our COVID hole here at the Fire Safe Council, but we're, we've been busy at it all year. And I would love to make more of a presentation to the council in detail about these issues. And I really can't do that in the three minutes I just passed by to do so.
Mayor, may I request that he be giving an, an extra minute or two? Because this is the kind of information that we need, I feel.
Okay, is there any objection to us extending the comment? Because, okay, Chris, you, you continue a couple more minutes here. We'll give you Lynn Mount Martin's time. She, she didn't show up. Do you have anything else you want to say? Or did Chris hang up?
You know, Mayor, he was, from what I heard from Chris is, is he's putting together some grants to actually provide a study to help us to determine exactly what we're talking about tonight, Fire Safety Maps. That's what I'm hearing. But that's what we're actually voting on.
You're not actually voting on that. I, I think we're calling upon, to make a more detailed presentation to the city about this. And what I'm saying as far as the hazard map goes, that I don't see any problem with its, with its adoption. I just don't know what good it's going to do. I think you need a lot more localized, fine scale data to make your, to make the kind of determinations you're talking about. And further, furthermore, to do these kinder, kind of structure assessments that are necessary. See, first you have the fine scale mapping, that prioritizes what you're going to do. Instead of going to every house, you prioritize based on location of assets and relationship to fuel loads, et cetera. And then you can take that and prioritize your assessments. And with that data, you can go seek other kinds of funding like FEMA to actually help pay for these things. So it's, it's a step by step program, but the fine scale mapping is the beginning of the data collection you need to, to, to start the process. Without that, you're flying blind and the CAL FIRE maps are simply mean, look at them, they're all orange and red. What's that going to do for you? It doesn't tell you what you guys have to do at the local level.
May I ask a question of?
Yes.
Chris, wanting to do a formal presentation, and if so, when could you do it?
When's the next council meeting?
Well, I would be, I don't know if the rest of the council will support it, but I think, I think the hour is late, it's urgent that we do this.
Now, I will, I mean, I'm happy to do it at the, at the earliest convenience of the council. I will say, in terms of the ember cast problem, the Thomas Fire was what, what is referred to as a stand replacing fire. So our reduced fuel loads on our foothill and mountain slopes actually has given us a little bit of a window. Now, there's still areas of fuel concentration that could set off a house to house ignition pattern, but not the kind of Paradise File, kind of, you know, citywide pattern. So we have a little bit of a window here and a reprieve, but this is the time to act. And we need the support of the city to move forward on this.
Well, I don't, I don't think we would need, as much as, I listened to a presentation from me, Chris, because it's just valuable information. But the reality is, we would support you with, with a letter or anything of that nature. But you're seeking grants that we have nothing to do with, other than writing a support letter and how it might benefit our community.
And depending on the terms of the grant, it may be within the existing legislative program to support the application, mindful that if the grant is received, whatever it requires the council to do on the legislative front would return to council. That may not require a presentation to, to do that.
Am I still on? Yes, so, well, I will say that just prior to the COVID pandemic shutdown, we were, and with the passage, passage of Measure C, we were planning to come to the city, hoping with these increased revenues that, to make such a presentation. And then, as we all know, the whole thing kind of went down the tubes. So facing a large deficit, we didn't feel that was appropriate to come forward to the city council and do that. But at some point, we are going to need some, you know, because often the matching components of these grants is very important. CAL FIRE does not require a match, but it improves your chances. These, these kinds of, and this kind of particular grant is obviously very, very time consuming to do this, just to build a, build the, the consortium of agencies necessary to do this. We have a private industry partner, at least one. And all that comes off, quite frankly, my back, as I work for no compensation to do this. So, you know, the Fire Safe Council could use some funding through the city to do this, to support its efforts. We are actually widespread in our efforts, but we could use some backing on this. But we do need also the city to come to, to join with us. For example, we have a pending National Science Foundation grant. James, you know about that. And the city has, is agreed to collaborate on the planning grant for that. And it has to do with enhanced emergency communications in real time during a Thomas level kind of event. So it is, it's a mixture of direct city support, it's direct, it's support from the city in terms of collaborating, it's support from the city in terms of support that we need to continue our efforts to gain funding to do all this. Because it's, as you all know, it's, 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 it's a very competitive world out there to get these grants.
Okay, well, thank you, Chris.
Yeah, I'd like to make a, suggest a motion, given the lateness of the hour.
Yeah.
I'm always open to a motion.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a motion, given the lateness of the hour. And I think that I'm sensing a general feeling of it's high, this has really been valuable to get the focus going, but we're probably not ready to all feel comfortable exactly what implications are, what we're voting for. So I'm going to make a, a motion that we continue this item to the next council meeting for further study and understanding with the, also further invitation for Mr. Dance to do a presentation as part of that continued item at the next council meeting.
I'd like to second that.
Okay, well, we have a motion and second to place this topic back on the agenda and to have a presentation from Mr. Danch to give a little more information on, you know, the, well, we, we don't have any material on it right now, but, you know, we should take a look at it. I have one question of the city attorney. When the federal government and the state government and the watershed protection people and everybody came up, we had flood maps in the valley. They had a lot of public hearings that they, was that required or was that just part of the transparency and, you know, community outreach, you know?
The flood map system does require a series of public hearings. The same is not true for CAL FIRE's designation of very high fire hazard severity zone maps.
Okay, so the city has the authority to do that if they should find reason to do that as a, an improvement over what we've got. Because I think it actually makes the town safer, but I, I hate to see us draw a, a map that we already know exists. You know, we're three point, or 4.34 square miles and we're all in the high fire zone. We've already experienced the Thomas Fire. So we need to spend some money out of Measure C when it arrives eventually to start addressing some of this, these things. And knowing if we could pick the, you know, I assume that the BAB, in their process of drawing this map, identified some, well, I know that Bob Daddy and I have driven the town too, and there are, there are a half a dozen things, right, that should be glaring. And the question is, is can, with a little money and enforcement, could we do anything? Or do we actually need the map or something else before we can actually get the property owner to, to deal with it?
With our code enforcement, you know, our, our code enforcement improvements, if we have direction from council, we can target those things. So that, that is one thing we can do in the meantime.
Mayor, specifically, can I ask Councilman Wierich, what are we asking staff to bring back in two weeks?
First of all, a little bit more specifics about what exactly we're committing to in terms of additional regulations and Public Resource Code 4290 and 4291 that we don't have discretion over. I'll give you an example. The statement in the staff report, the, the regulations shall include minimum private water supply reserves for emergency fire use. I don't know exactly what that means. And then I, I, so that's one thing. More specifics about exactly what we're committing to in terms of additional regulations and a further chance to get educated by the Fire Safety Council in terms of a, you know, maybe a 10 or 20 minute presentation.
Okay, we make, I don't want to give, you know, too much delay to it, but in two, I think maybe you, you know, the agendas will get put together almost as soon as we adjourn this meeting. And that's not going to leave with the city manager by himself, pretty much, to be able to, he's not an expert in it, nor any of the rest of us.
About this meeting in October.
You know, or, or is the very earliest date that the, the city attorney and the city manager can put together, say, a, a list of things that we can do now and a list of things we could do better if we had the map.
I just don't want to leave it completely open ended, Mayor.
Okay, okay, we, you know, okay, not to exceed.
How about no later than the last meeting in October?
Right, and sooner if possible.
Yeah, as soon as possible, but no later than the last meeting in October.
Susan?
Mayor, I don't know if we did receive two very informative emails from Chris Danch. And I distributed them maybe an hour before the meeting, but, but I think they're helpful in understanding what, what he's doing. And, and I just wanted to call your attention to that, that there are two, two emails addressing what he wants to do.
And can we divide, can we divide this between the, the question of coming back with a list, the laundry list of stuff of impacts versus Chris Danch's talking about? If you want to hear the, I mean, he could be, come in next, next meeting and do ten minutes.
I, I'm good with that. We have him come in next meeting and then we have a, we, we break, we take up the item for deliberation, no later than the last meeting in October.
Okay.
I have one more thing I want staff to look at. Am I interrupting or may I have a turn?
Well, yes, you have, but are we talking about agenda items or are we talking about the fire? We're not talking about agenda in general, okay?
No, James, here's a situation that may be common. I live in a, a very old rental. And I was willing to pay to have a fire trap hazard garage removed. I would have paid the demolishment, maybe it was $3,000, whatever. But my landlady, I was told by city staff that that could not be done unless my landlady was prepared to put up a new structure. And I think we should look at that thing in the code because there may be other old structures. I mean, my house is made out of brick, I doubt it'll burn, but the garage is old wood.
Okay, we're, we're starting to stray a little far from, you know, it's a good point you're making, but that's, it's specific.
Looking at, if we're going to look at, you know, logs stuck, you know, you, you mentioned people stacking wood beside their house, right? This is the same situation, it's just a stack of old wood about the fall, but I.
But there's no zoning regulation that requires you to have a, a stack of wood. You do have to have at least one covered parking space potentially. So we, we can get to that. I think it's a good point to bring up. Randy, is this back on?
No, same, same thing. I'm just going to say, by, by extending this to the end of October or, you know, October, it also allows all of us to give James additional questions and concerns that we might have and that we might hear from our constituents. So I agree with splitting it up and letting Chris come the next council and then giving staff a little longer to actually come up with, with the right answers to our concerns.
Okay, so ready for a vote? Or if there's no objection to the motion, you have it, James? What's being asked, you know, and let's remind ourselves that there's only one James. And he's working seven days a week. We gotta, you know, prioritize. Obviously, fire at this time of the year is important to, you know, that's important all year round, but.
Thank you, Mr. Ulrich and, and.
Yeah, thanks, Bill. Appreciate it. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Helping us get focused on this, thank you.
Okay, so we'll see you in, you know, two weeks, Chris, if you're still out there. That brings us, I guess, to the conclusion of the meeting. What do we have here? Staff or council reports, start up on the upper left hand corner. Bill, do you have any?
Yes, I, I wanted to say that, thank you, councilperson Francina. She arranged a walk meeting with PAX Environmental on the invasive species removal grant in the Stewart Canyon. in the Stewart Canyon. I found it extremely valuable because it pointed out that there, you know, some concerns by neighbors, and at the same time, made clear that there are some trade-offs to be made here between, for example, there's low impact versus high impact straws taking water out of that watershed in the form of eucalyptus trees and our other invasive Mexican fan palms. But there's a difference between the cost-benefit ratio between taking out a mature eucalyptus tree, let's say 90 feet from the stream, versus one that's in the stream. There's the issue of cost trade-offs for a bang for the buck in terms of the size and type of the species replacement, especially sycamores that may be going in that are, I did not realize are the main things displaced by the current red gum eucalyptus. The point I'm trying to make here is that there does seem to be some room for discretion in terms of setting priorities. And, for example, the some of the neighbors that are up in the culvert area near the outfall where the storm drain comes out are concerned about losing screening from a neighboring the neighborhood across the way. And I talked, and they said, they have no problem taking out some of the younger eucalyptus trees, but the, some of the mature ones, they'd like, you know, that are way away from the stream, they would like to keep, and that might be a very reasonable trade-off. They said the concern from PAX Environmental is that it continues perhaps seeding eucalyptus into the watershed, and they're trying to get away from the invasive species. Well, the city could commit, wouldn't be that hard to commit as part of our climate park and education and volunteer work, and maybe some public works commitment. Once a year, we go through there and take up the seedlings.
Okay. Bill, where is the report going?
What I'm trying to say is that it demonstrated that there is a role here to address some concerns by some of the neighbors without sacrificing and maybe enhancing the primary goals of the grant. And that was a very useful exercise for me to see.
Oh, okay, good. Okay, Ryan, you have anything to report?
We had an APCD meeting today. That was about it. Like I said, the city, we've inquired with APCD about having a greenhouse gas inventory done for Ojai. Well, now everybody else has requested, and it's going to come back before APCD, but it's one thing that we're adding kind of to the manager's responsibilities moving forward. So we're going to see how that's going to work, but there's a lot of interest amongst all the cities in the county. And that's, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Randy?
No, I'm good.
Okay, Susan?
I agree with the way that Bill characterized our tour of Stewart Canyon. We met with about 10 neighbors and a couple of volunteers from the community garden, and I did not realize how Stewart Canyon runs practically, you know, a few feet from their backyard. And Scott Tompkinsen, I hadn't met him before. He is so incredibly knowledgeable to answer questions. I highly recommend that the city somehow support having a tour. You know, and I know it might be difficult with COVID and all that, but it would really, I know that the public would be, there would be great interest in having their concern, their questions answered. Plus, it's just so educational to actually walk the creek. Is he a biologist, Bill?
Yeah, he's an ecological botanist.
Yeah, he grew up in Ojai. It turned out that I know his mother, and she, I met her because we were protesting the cutting of a eucalyptus grove. It's all very interesting, these connections. And he is, he's just, he's mentally, on every level, I felt he addressed our concerns.
And acknowledged about constructive trade-offs could be made.
Yeah, yeah, he was, he's just fabulous. So if there's a way to have a public tour outdoors with masks and social distancing, I think that would be a really good idea. And we need a press release, because the way that the newspaper characterized this, the headline said, you know, hundreds of trees, city to ask trees. We have to have a press release that explains the restorative nature of what we're trying to do there, you know? I think this is critical before any work proceeds.
A little bit misleading from the press reports.
Yeah. Yeah, I just, now I've had that tour.
Always remember that Caltrans planted a lot of eucalyptus trees to lower the groundwater level. We need the opposite, so, okay. City managers report. Anything additional you'd like to mention tonight?
No, the only thing quickly I'll mention is for the September 22nd meeting, at this point, we have a few tentative items, which is, we just added the presentation from Chris Dance that we will coordinate. We have Title 10 revisions from the Planning Commission, which is just their initial round of cleanup, was scheduled to come back. You know, we'll continue to do the coronavirus update. And then we have, we're working right now on the Sterling Contract Extension to bring that back as well, which I know is, these are all unique circumstances where we don't have concerts this year, but the contract for concerts was ending this year, so we're bringing that back for council to consider. So those are the items tentatively scheduled for the 22nd.
Okay. Have a question for the city manager?
Yes.
I have a question for the city manager.
Yes, go ahead.
James, you know my concern here. I, on the demonstration project, one of the primary goals of that demonstration project, or the ATP grant in general, is traffic calming. And therefore, I was certainly under the expectation, based on previous meetings, that one of the metrics we would be measuring from the demonstration project would be traffic calming. In other words, having an average speed before, an average speed after. And I'm concerned that, I felt I was led to believe that that would be, since it is such an essential part of the goals of the grant, that we'd be collecting data on that metric, and I'm still confused as to whether or not we're going to be.
Yeah, and I met with the Public Works Director this morning on this, and essentially, it appears that the tentative plan between he and the demonstration project leads was to use the Caltrans study done last year in 2019 for this. But we talked about, he is going to reach out and find out how we can add a speed survey prior to.
Before and after. So we get a treatment effect.
Yeah, so that's our plan right now, is to try to make that modification.
You know, I was planning to ask this question at the Community Advisory Committee meeting tomorrow at 11:00.
Yeah, because it was at a previous Community Advisory meeting when I asked that question, and I was told, yes, we were going to do speed sensors.
If you're able to be on the meeting, or it'll be recorded, so I'll ask, and James, and Greg will be at the meeting as well, so it'll get addressed.
I'm not sure I can, but.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, we're future agenda items at this point. I have one question and then a recommendation. The REACH Code, I know that it's controversial, but we kicked that over to the BAV, and then they kicked it back to us or something, and then they, and we officially kicked it to the BAV, and then they sent it to staff or something, saying we can't do it. James, are they ready to give us some kind of a feedback so that it just doesn't go there to die? We're going to kill it, we should do it at council.
Yeah, so the current status is the Climate Committee, they requested certain answer, or certain information from the Climate Committee. The Climate Committee provided it, I think it was last Friday, not this most recent, but, you know, 10 days ago or 11 days ago. And so we were working with them to schedule the meeting with the BAV, so that's, it's currently in process of being scheduled, and there's no definitive date yet.
I know when they're going to, you know, normally the BAV loves to meet, or used to say, why don't we get to have meetings?
Yeah, we were talking about end of September was when, was the dates that they were looking at.
Okay, well, I would like to bring up, I'll put it back on the agenda for council to deal with it then, say, in October, maybe late October, but I think we ought to address that. I got a note from some of our folks at the newspaper, talking about the climate. Turned it down. Talking about the council members yelling climate change and not mitigating the consequences. Well, you know, I agree that we need to address that, and also the causes of climate change, where I read statistics that say that the pollution of the air is about 80, or probably 50% of the carbon is coming out of the buildings we put up. So anyway, that's just a heads-up and a warning. It's coming back. I would like to hear it from the BAV, but I don't want it to be dragged on forever, and so, anyway. Anybody else? If not, we're all exhausted. Okay, well, you've been great. Good night, everyone. We're adjourned.